Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September tenth, two thousand and twenty four public board meeting at the Halton District School Board. I would like to extend a special welcome to our guests, both in line, online, and in person. We will begin with our first role call of the year. Vice Chair Oliver.
Good evening, everyone, and I'd like to wish all of our students and staff a very happy and successful new school year.
Trustee Ahmed.
Good evening, everyone. I'm present here.
Trustee Baxter.
Good evening.
Trustee Bryden.
Good evening.
Trustee Gray.
Good evening.
Trustee Rocha.
Hello.
Trustee Shuttleworth.
Hello, everyone.
Trustee Zhang.
Good evening.
Trustee Daniele has spent, has sent her regrets. Student trustee Hu. Student trustee Ochu.
Good evening.
A special welcome to our new student trustees, Charlie Ochu and Caitlin Hu. Director Anis, please let us know which staff are in attendance this evening.
Thank you so much, Chair Collard. We have a full complement of staff here this afternoon to support tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Tonight, I will be honoring the land. We begin by acknowledging the land and our responsibility to care for and respect all that provides us with life. This land upon which HDSB is situated is on the ancestral treaty and title lands of the Anishinaabe, Ojibwe, Michoacan Nation, now known as the Mississaugas of the Credit. Michoacan Territory in the past and present continues to host both indigenous and non-indigenous peoples. The HDSB is committed to continuous knowledge building with respect to actions that address and resolve the ongoing impacts of colonialism. We do this by learning and understanding the true history, treaty obligations, duties and responsibilities, and indigenous rights while actively maintaining mutually beneficial relationships and collectively respecting and caring for the land. Trustee Shuttleworth, would you make a motion to approve the agenda?
Sure.
Trustee Rocha, would you like to second this motion?
I would.
Are there any objections to approving the agenda? Trustee Bryden.
I believe our student trustees actually have a report to give us this time. May we add a report under the presentation section?
We already are having a report after there's one in.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing none, the agenda is approved by unanimous consent. Are there any declarations of possible conflict of interest for this evening's meeting? Seeing none, we are now up to item two point zero, delegations presentations to the board. We begin with the student oath and declaration. Director Anis, would you please preside over the students' oath and declaration?
Good evening, everyone. We have this evening our two student trustees, Charlie Ochu and Caitlin Hao. And Caitlin, will you start by this trustee declaration and we will do the sign in, okay, and welcome you to the board officially?
I, Caitlin Ho, do solemnly declare that, in accordance with the Education Act, relating legislation and Halton District School Board policy and procedure, I will truthfully, faithfully, impartially, and to my best of my ability execute the office of student trustee. And in my role as student trustee, I will comply with the municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Private Act, Privacy Act, and the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, recognizing the importance of maintaining the confidentiality of the board with regards to matters that are dealt within closed session, and declare not to divulge any information of the contents of any material shared with trustees in closed meetings, whether or not I am present and or participating in the closed meetings, and that I am not disqualified under any requirement of being a student trustee member of the HSB school board.
And this is declared before at the city of Burlington in the regional municipality of Halton on the tenth day of September, two thousand and twenty four.
I, Charlie Ochu, do solemnly declare that, in accordance with the Education Act, related legislation and Halton District School Board policies and procedures, I will truly, faithfully, impartially, and to the best of my ability execute the office of student trustee. And in my role as student trustee, I will comply with the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act and the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, recognizing the importance of maintaining the confidentiality of the board with regard to matters that are dealt with in closed session, and declare not to divulge any information of the contents of any material shared with trustees in closed meetings, whether or not I am present and or participating in the closed meetings, and that I am not disqualified under any requirement from being a student trustee member of the Halton District School Board.
Declared before me at the city of Burlington and the regional municipality of Halton on the tenth day of September, two thousand and twenty four. Trustees, ladies and gentlemen, please join me in welcoming Caitlin and Charlie to the role, student trustees. Thank you very much. Thank you. We look forward to working and serving with you this year.
Congratulations to student trustees Ochu and Hu. Would you like to make any comments or give us an update?
Yes, please. Good evening, HSB staff, parents, and students. My name is trustee Ho. I'm a grade eleven student at Abbey Park High School, and it is with immense honor for trustee Ochu and I to officially introduce ourselves as the two thousand and twenty four, two thousand and twenty five student trustees of the Halton District School Board. Through our journeys as student, as HSB students, and now as representatives of sixty seven thousand plus students who call HSB schools their homes, we have received nothing but support and kindness from everyone here today. We are looking forward to working together and platforming student voice throughout this upcoming school year.
As you may know, I am trustee Ochu, and I too am a grade eleven student, though I attend Oakville-Trafalgar High School. From senate meetings with an incredibly dedicated group of students to OCEA's annual general meeting, as well as the two thousand and twenty four to two thousand and twenty eight multi-year planning and orientation, trustee Ho and I have quite the report to share. Without further ado, here's what we've been up to.
Kicking off our term as student trustees right here in the boardroom, on August nineteenth and twentieth, trustee Ochu and I were very fortunate to have attended the multi-year plan engagement session for trustees and the senior team. Throughout the day and a half, we were able to engage in important conversations in the HSB with trustees and superintendents in brainstorming and facilitating the creation of the new two thousand and twenty four to two thousand and twenty eight multi-year plan. We represented the student perspective through voting, sharing our thoughts, and even exercising our creative talents, and were delighted to see some of our suggestions being incorporated into the recent NYPD drafts. Trustee Ochu and I are endlessly grateful for this opportunity to participate in planning and understanding the commitments of HSB for the next four years. Soon after, on Thursday, August twenty second, trustee Ochu and I presented at the Halton Leadership Conference, delivering a five-minute presentation detailing an introduction to ourselves, the student senate, and some areas of action we would like to focus on throughout our term.
Even though we joined late in February, the student senate welcomed us with open arms, and we grew closer together with each passing meeting. Our favorite piece of these senate meetings was seeing how many students across dozens of schools wanted to inspire positive change within their communities. This commitment was also apparent at the Halton Youth Leadership Symposium. But we don't want to forget to mention the backbone of our senate, our wonderful staff advisors. Senate meetings can only go as smoothly as they do because of their overwhelming assistance with the planning and execution of the meetings. With their support, we were able to come up with small improvements to the meetings as well as an overall plan for this new school year. Rather than having either in-person or virtual meetings, trustee Ho and I are providing an online option for students who may not be able to attend in person. We also plan to increase the length of senate meetings to foster engagement and community building.
Ever since June of this year, we have been working alongside our previous student trustees, as well as our staff advisors, in creating and launching the student senate co-chair role. The main responsibilities of this role upheld by an HSB student senator would concentrate on leading student senate meetings, as well as supporting the student trustees in our operational duties, allowing us to serve more as liaisons between the senate and the board. Additionally, in May, trustee Ochu and I attended the annual general meeting conference hosted by the Ontario Student Trustee Association. Along with the ability to network and connect with student trustees and stakeholders from across the province, trustee Ochu and I were able to engage in crucial conversations, gaining food for thought for changes we would like to bring back to impact the HSB.
On August twentieth, we went to our trustee orientation with trustee Oliver and trustee Bryden, and had the privilege of meeting with director Anis and director Salmini. Across our training sessions and our meeting with the CEO of the Halton Learning Foundation, Mark Laird, we believe we are ready to take on this role.
In terms of goals and outlining a few objectives we'd like to work on this year, trustee Ochu and I hope to especially focus on student engagement. As stated in our speech at the Halton Leadership Conference, we believe student engagement within the board is a necessary component for everyone to thrive and have their voices shared. On the topic of engagement, there are certain aspects trustee Ochu and I would like to focus on.
Firstly, we hope to promote engagement in AI literacy and student and staff feedback, so students are using it positively to its full potential. Especially given the new AI policies in the HSB, trustee Ho and I wanted to work with students and the community to understand what this change means.
We would also love to promote more engagement and accessibility in mental health resources, which we have worked towards in consulting the Mental Health and Well-being Advisory Committee, as well as other student trustees across the board to see what they are doing in their respective boards.
We're also looking for promoting engagement and curriculum feedback as one of our priorities. So students and staff are enjoying the content learned in schools while also having success in it, as well as increasing diversity in the arts and literature that students are exposed to. So students feel that all their cultures have representation within their education.
Finally, we want to focus on engaging the student body and bridging the gap between student trustees, the student senate, and all HSB students, as to make sure all students know what is going on in schools and have the ability to advocate for their education. Through setting aside time to interview HSB students each month about their concerns and supporting student senators and implementing more initiatives within their respective schools, we are dedicated to hearing all student voices and representing them well at the board. Trustee Ochu and I have been working hard, consulting students and doing research in the areas we previously mentioned, and are very excited to be working with you all and seeing the potential initiatives we are able to implement.
Our initiated, our initiation to the HSB Board of Trustees has been incredible, and we're thankful for everyone who helped us on the way in. We were lucky to have been able to assist in the planning of the two thousand and twenty four to two thousand and twenty eight multi-year plan and all the online meetings with the staff advisors, as well as trustees Rebellin and trustee Alimsonoff, were crucial in both leadership conference and everything that's gone into the student senate so far.
With that being said, we conclude our student trustee report and look forward to taking HSB to new heights this school year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions for our student trustees? Well, it sounds like you're off to the races. You've certainly been busy in the one month that you've already got under your belt, and so congratulations again on your swearing in, and we look forward to working with you. We are now up to items under section three, our consent agenda. For approval, we have the Halton District School Board minute for the special meetings on June nineteenth and July seventeenth. For receipt, we have the following information items: the outstanding action items formerly called the order paper, board report schedule, policy and governance procedure review schedule, approved minutes of the committee of the whole, May twenty second, two thousand and twenty three, two thousand and twenty four annual pick report, and quarterly capital update. And correspondence to the board as listed below. I believe we had six different letters to the board this summer. I will read the motion, be it resolved at the Halton District School Board, approve the consent agenda, and receive the information items for September ten, two thousand and twenty four. Trustee Ahmed, would you make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes, please.
And trustee Baxter, would you second this motion?
Yes, please.
Are there any items that need to be pulled for discussion this evening? Are there any objections to approving the consent agenda? Oh, I'm sorry, trustee Rocha.
Yes, through you, Chair. I'd like to pull the Policy and Governance Procedure Review Schedule. I have a question.
Please proceed with your question.
Okay, thank you. So in reviewing the report, it lists that, let me just flip screens here. It lists that the electronic meetings policy is due for review this month, and I didn't see it listed as an upcoming report for October. So my question is, is it currently being looked at, and can we expect it in the October board meeting package?
Thank you for that question. Trustee Bryden, as chair of that committee, would you like to respond?
Yes, the Governance Document Review Committee took a look at its, at its most recent meeting. With the new regulations coming into effect in September, two thousand and twenty five, our recommendation was to look at it early next year despite our regular four-year cycle in case additional changes came down the pike before the regulations come into effect. So we expect it to come to board in February, somewhere between February and April this year.
All right, thank you. Are there any other items to be pulled? Seeing none, the consent agenda is approved by unanimous consent. We are now up to section four, items for ratification action. And items for April the third include four point one point one, Ministry of Education, two thousand and twenty four, twenty five capital priorities program submission request. Report twenty four zero one one zero submitted by superintendent Godet and general manager Tebow. Be it resolved that the board approve the projects as identified in report twenty four one one zero to be submitted to the Ministry of Education as part of the two thousand and twenty four, twenty five capital priorities program submission. Trustee Gray, would you like to make this motion?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Trustee Shuttleworth, would you second this motion?
Yes, I will.
Superintendent Godet and general manager Tebow, would you like to speak to this report?
Through Madam Chair, of course, and then welcome back, everyone. Over the summer months, the ministry released its two thousand and twenty four call for capital priority submissions. So we reviewed what we had previously submitted in former years, and we decided that for this round, we'll just be submitting the Oakville Northeast Number One High School Sixth Classroom Edition. That was the only capital priority that wasn't approved in the last round of submissions that we made. If you recall, we, we submitted three. We received Milton District High School, as well as the Oakville Number Five Edition. This one was not funded, so we're going to be recirculating it. We did meet with the Ministry of Education, kind of went over the capital priors with them and explained, you know, maybe filled in some of the gaps as to why they think it wasn't funded, and then they seem to think that it is a good case, and we should submit it and move forward with it, so we will be doing so, subject to board approval. There were questions around polyfission, whether we want to resubmit that, but as, as per the report that we provided here, it didn't necessarily fit within the requirements of the ministry. So we'll keep that one in mind, and the board has, or sorry, staff have its own action plan to continue on the works that are planned for that school. However, it won't be benefiting from an additional childcare or any ministry funding for this round, but we'll keep a close eye on it in the future years. Happy to take any questions on the report before you this evening.
Thank you very much, general manager Tebow, and I do see a speaker on the speakers list. Go ahead, please, trustee Amos.
Thank you, through you. Thank you very much for this report, and I'm very happy to see that we're asking for some more money to make the high school a bit bigger. I guess my question is more general. Last year at this time, we had anticipated that we would already have shovels in the ground last year. So do we now know when shovels are going to be in the ground? Because originally, the school was fought to open in two thousand and twenty five. Well, that's not happening because it takes three years to build a high school. So, so I know that we were looking for architects. I'm not sure if one was selected and if, how far that we've gone with that, but where are we in the process? Because I know that community, that's the single most question I get asked, when is the high school coming? So.
Through Madam Chair to trustee Amos. Unfortunately, yeah, last year, we essentially burned a year because of just very bad weather and the archaeological assessments that were required. So we were constantly just waiting for dry soil so that they can excavate and document everything, and unfortunately, that dragged on for the better part of the year. Thankfully, now that's over, so over the summer months, we've been able to secure further approvals through our developer partner, Six Oak Inc. They managed to strip the sites. Grading works have begun. We have exported surplus native soil that we don't want to use, and we substituted now for granular materials to accelerate building construction later on. That's anticipated to be done if all goes to plan, end of October. So that way, we'll have a site that's relatively prepared. We're hoping that the subdivision process will near its end, and then we can hopefully register in the fall. If not, it'll be in the winter time, but now with a granular pad, we'll be able to work in the winter months ideally. We've also secured ministry approvals over the summer months for approval to proceed and additional funding. So now we've kind of bridged the gap to an amount that's more reasonable and representative of the market. We have our architect, so we're going for building permits immediately, probably in a week or so, we'll be submitting. So with all that, you know, we're hoping to get shovels in the grounds within the next six months and get going on construction. And I think, again, with the preparation we've done for the site, I think we can achieve that and accelerate the construction. But again, it'll be dependent on when we get in, when we get our, our, our contract to do the work, and assuming that we're hopefully within budget, especially with the additional funding that we receive from the ministry. So we'll have to see. I won't give you a definitive date, but we're hopeful that it's, it's soon.
Thank you. You said something about the approval of the municipal, municipal some, community or something, something else had to be approved before we could go forward?
We're just waiting for registration of the draft plan. So the draft plan's been approved, all the other, it's all done. So right now, they're just going through the technical review and going through, because there's a pond that has to be built and all that other, I don't want to say stuff, but all those other requirements. We're near the end. They're just having to go through the final process and get it done. But a lot of the construction is taking place. If you drive by, the pond's been dug out, the site's being filled right now. So we're just kind of going through the paperwork and the final throes. And once that's done, then we'll be able to start closing on the site and acquiring the site. So it's, yeah, there's a few municipal approvals left over to register it, create the blocks, and then we can acquire the blocks.
So, so things are proceeding as they should, or do we need to politically get involved with the municipality?
Through Madam Chair, we're not there yet to do the latter. I think things are moving along as quickly as they can. The municipality understands, and they want us in the ground too, because I'm sure they're getting the same heat. So I think everybody's pressing forward, and hopefully, we'll, we'll get this through and get those shovels in.
Thank you so much. Trustee Bryden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is, beyond this year, what, what projects are on the horizon potentially for the next year or, or beyond?
Through Madam Chair, that's a great question. I'm going to temper this with, I, I don't think very many. I think in the next round, we're going to have to take a very close look at what we currently have in our, in our, in our pipeline. I'll say this, that the next sites that we have in Oakville and Milton, I don't foresee them being shovel-ready within the next couple of years. The ministry's really changed their approach on, the site needs to be shovel-ready. Essentially, we're ready to start building. And I think that's a fair thing to do if we have other competing interests throughout the province, so that the money goes towards building right away, and we're not going into these situations where money is stale. I, I don't see there being any in the next round, to be completely honest with you. We'll continue to do our assessment of other non-growth-related sites, but again, they don't fall within that growth component, so it'll be hard for us to submit those. But that just gives us time to work on the feasibility and working up towards that shovel-ready state, so that when the call does come, we're going to be submitting fewer of them in the future, but at least when we're submitting them, they're going to be ones that we want the funding right away, as opposed to ones that are, you know, as, as the old process used to be. We'll be funded later on. We just want you to know about them, or we got caught up, as sometimes we got funded for the ones we weren't ready for, and now we're, we're stuck trying to chase ourselves. So I think, to answer your question a long-winded way, don't expect much because the land's just not ready. So we're going to hold off and just get to that shovel-ready state before submitting anything.
Thank you. Seeing no other speakers on the list, please cast your votes. Go ahead. Trustee Gray, would you like to vote? Thank you very much. That passes unanimously. At this time, I'd like to call a two-minute recess. Are we off? Okay. Thank you. The next item is 4.1.2 Governance Report 24111, submitted by Chair Collard and Vice Chair Oliver. Be it resolved that the governance report appended to Report 24111 be approved and that the applicable documents be updated to reflect the changes as necessary, and I so move. Vice Chair Oliver, would you like to second this motion?
I'll second the motion.
I will pass the gavel to Vice Chair Oliver and speak to this report. Just wanted to start off by noticing that there was an error in the report. I listed the date that we met with Marian Thompson instead of the date of the Committee of the Whole meeting. And that has been rectified and will be reflected in the minutes. We've discussed this with Marian, we've discussed this amongst ourselves. The motion is before you. If there are any questions, please let me know. Or rather, let Joanna know. Okay, and we do have a speakers list. Trustee Bryden. Trustee Baxter.
Thank you, through the chair. Just to follow up to what you just mentioned about the correction. So I understand it will be in the minutes. Will the report itself that's available online also be corrected? Sorry, that was through the chair to manage your comments. Sorry, thank you.
No, and the reason for that is that the agenda has already been published and distributed as part of the agenda package. However, it will be noted in the minutes that Report 24111, there was an error at the particular item, and then the corrected wording.
Okay, thank you. That answers another question that I have, just generally about reports. So if there is something in error in a report, if a report is incomplete, it does not get updated such that the public can see the revision? That's correct? Okay, so I have one more question regarding 2.1.4. Did staff or trustees receive formal expressions of concern from the public regarding the recognition of history and heritage months? That's the first question. And the second one, Chair Collard, you indicated in June that the next step after raising the question at Committee of the Whole, and thank you, I did watch the video and I remember it now, would be to consult with the Human Rights and Equity Department and advisor. And I'm wondering if there's a report that could be shared that contained their opinion?
The first, answer to the first question is yes. We've had several complaints about certain groups who are not recognized by the national or provincial heritage and history months. So that was definitely where the concern came from. And the answer to the second question, this is why I take one at a time.
I thought I was being efficient, but that wasn't helping.
Oh, the human rights, yes. No, we didn't get a report. What we got was a confirmation that they agreed with the decision. And I think Director Anis can respond to that.
Yes, we had a conversation about that. And through the chair, we will be furnishing a report at a later day.
Just pull out your mic so you can hear better.
Is it better? Or it needs to be closer to?
Pull it out.
Oh, pull it out. I'll just make it closer. Okay, sorry about that. So I have a question slash concern about those answers regarding the corrections to the report. So I am absolutely in support of this motion and the initiative to remove it from our agendas. But I predict that we could receive concerns from the public. And I would like to be able to refer them to how the decision was made and when and that kind of thing. So if the report was corrected and complete, I could just refer them to the agenda. But it sounds like I need to refer them to the report as well as the minutes from the meeting in order to understand where they would go to find this information. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Okay, next speaker, Trustee Gray.
Thank you very much, through the vice chair. I just wanted to make a comment. When I read this report, and I noted that it goes all the way back to some of the learnings that we had through these meetings with Marian Thompson, how I found myself remembering a lot of this and understanding that there's been some great note-taking by someone and that there's been a lot of capturing and a lot of involvement by all of us to try and make our board meetings and our Committee of the Whole more functional and so on and so forth. And so I just want to give props to, I guess it would be the authors of this, Chair Collard and Vice Chair Oliver, for their work on this. It had to have happened during the summer, when many of us were doing other things. And this is quite a fulsome report. And I just congratulate you on capturing so much of the discussion and the information that was shared last spring and bringing it to us tonight for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. The motion's on the floor, and you can proceed to vote. Thank you. That passes unanimously. Trustee Ocho, would you like to cast your vote? And trustee who? Thank you. The next item on our agenda is 4.1.3 Trustee Code of Conduct Report 24112, submitted by the Governance Document Review Steering Committee, Standing Committee. Trustee Bryden, would you make this motion? I guess I have to read the motion. My apologies. Be it resolved that the trustee code of conduct policy appended to Report 24112 be approved? Trustee Bryden, would you like to move this?
Yes.
Motion. Trustee Zhang, would you second this motion?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Would you like to speak to this motion, Trustee Bryden?
The province enacted new regulations affecting the requirements within trustee code of conducts across the province. Most of those requirements are already captured within our code of conduct, but there were a few specific things that were not explicitly there. And so these amendments reflect the requirements of the provincial regulations.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding this report? Trustee Rocha.
Yes, through you, Chair, to the members of the committee. My first question is, the trustee code of conduct as presented to us includes an acknowledgement and undertaking with the expectation of signatures and witnesses. When we first took our oath to start this term, we signed off on this form. So by having this code of conduct updated today, will we, A, be signing new paperwork? Or, two, will we, by the act of approving this code of conduct, automatically be agreeing to the terms in the policy?
I'm going to defer to Manager Khan to respond to that.
Thank you for the question. It's a good one. My recommendation would be that new acknowledgements are signed because though the board may pass changes, it may not be unanimous for whatever reason. So it's a personal acknowledgement that each person would need to confirm again.
All right, thank you. I do have a follow-up if no one else is on the speakers list.
You're the only one.
All right. So in reading the trustee code of conduct, I did come across line item 6.5, which refers to trustees being bound by the spirit of the HDSB Code of Ethics. I am cognizant that the policy in itself wasn't reviewed in its entirety. It was only updated to reflect the new regulations. But seeing as how there is a reference to a document that does not pertain to trustees, I'm wondering if the trustees around the table, the governance committee, would be amenable to removing the reference being made to the HDSB's Code of Ethics? Because that is a policy for staff, and we are not staff. Thank you.
I'd like to respond to that, if I may. If we are to make any changes beyond those that are legislated, we have to bring this back another month to vote on it because it has to come to two meetings, and this is the first meeting. So if we're going to make that change, that would be something that would take this off the table for another month. And time is of the essence. This was supposed to have been done by August 28th, but we didn't have a meeting until now. So we do have to get this passed tonight. And I'm sure that we will be looking at making other changes in the future. Trustee Shuttleworth.
Hi, yes, thank you, through you, Chair. And responding to trustee Rocha's concern, I'm looking at the Code of Ethics, and it speaks specifically about employees, which we are not. So I don't know that I feel comfortable with that being there because that piece does not directly relate to us as trustees. We aren't employees, and this Code of Ethics specifically focuses on employees of the board.
Yes, and that is why the item says that we are bound to the spirit of the Code of Ethics. And it is in our current one, which you already signed when you were inaugurated. So it's already in what you've signed. If you would, if you wait to, if you want to wait a month to pass this, I would say that we couldn't do that. But then we will be in violation much more seriously than we are now of having this done on time. Again, I'm sorry. Go ahead, go ahead.
The other solution through you, Chair, would be to perhaps suspend the rules and make an exception, seeing as how we recognize it is an error, probably something that we missed the last time we reviewed it. And we can approve, we can still approve the trustee code of conduct as it is and suspend the rule so that by removing that line item, we don't have to wait another month.
Manager Khan.
If I could just offer for consideration, perhaps the changes that are proposed tonight are passed because they're required legislative changes. But perhaps the piece about the Code of Ethics can be taken back to the Governance Committee for review and incorporation into a change next month or the subsequent month so as to not delay this required change. But then it's still on the radar for expedient change, if I could put it that way, the Code of Ethics piece.
And if I could add, my additional concern with that is that we're changing policy on the fly. There's been no discussion. The Governance Document Review Committee has not discussed this. There's, it hasn't come to Committee of the Whole for fulsome discussion. We're asking to take something out of our code of conduct without due process. And that concerns me greatly. I agree, it's something that probably shouldn't be there. But I am not prepared to say that I actually 100% am sure of that because we haven't reviewed it. I would prefer to actually review it to make sure that we want to remove it because it was put there for a reason. And it does say that it's the spirit of the Code of Ethics. So I am very much not in favor of this suggestion. Trustee Amos.
Thank you. I remember when this first came to board, and there was some discussion about the policy piece. And that's why it was put as spirit. Maybe it should have been intent or some other word. But it was, even though we're not employees of the board, we are to uphold the same values and ethics as what is expected of the employees. So that was the intent of including that as opposed to having it, we're not held to that policy, but it's the spirit of or the intent of that policy. So maybe what we need to do is just take pieces of that policy and put it into ours, so then we don't have the complication. But I don't believe this is the time. I believe because of the timing of what we need to do, we should be discussing whether we're passing it with the new changes and then send it back to the Policy Review Committee to then look at that piece.
Trustee Baxter.
Thank you, through the chair, and as well to trustees Rocha and Shuttleworth. Thank you for noticing that. I hadn't actually. I'm wondering, given that we are complying with the ministry's directive, there is the potential for the ministry to actually review our code of conduct policy, I'm assuming, to ensure that we have made the required changes. And they may see that we have something in there that possibly shouldn't be there. I'm wondering if one remedy could be that we suspend the rules to introduce and pass a motion potentially that says that we will look at, that we recognize that this could potentially be an issue and that we will look at it. And that shows on the record that a motion has been passed, that we will examine it, rather than in the more indirect way of just referring to committee. Would that be appropriate?
A motion could be made to ask for a review of this, but we don't need to suspend the rules because we have a motion regarding this item on the agenda. So, but, and that would come post the approval of this item. And that, I think, would be reflective in the minutes then of us following our due process. Yep. Okay, so let's proceed with the vote. So I'm sorry, Chair Collard, could you repeat the? Be it resolved that the trustee code of conduct policy appended to Report 24112 be approved? The other motion will come after. Yes, Navid? I'm sorry.
No, I'm just voting yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Trustee Gray is thumbs up. I've been removed from this. I'm having to get back in. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. That vote is unanimous. And congratulations on learning the system so quickly. Trustee Baxter, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, please. Now, you have to help me with the language, if you don't mind, Chair Collard. I would like to make a motion that the trustee code of conduct policy be referred to, is that where it's going? Governance Documents Review Committee for review specifically to examine, what number is it? 6.5, the reference to the Code of Ethics.
That's perfect. And would you like to second that motion, trustee Rocha?
I would.
I thought you might. Okay, is there any discussion regarding that motion? Is it in the system? Okay. Seeing none, I will put it on your screens.
Seeing none, I will put it on your screens. And please cast your votes. Perfect, thank you very much, and that is unanimous. Thank you for that addition. Trustee Baxter. The next item up for consideration is 4.1.4. Striking Committee Report, Report 24113 submitted by Chair Collard and Vice Chair Oliver. Be it resolved that the striking committee appended to Report 24113 be approved? Vice Chair Oliver, would you make this motion?
I make the motion.
Trustee Gray, would you second this motion?
I would, thank you.
Thank you. And since this is our first school year, full school year, using the revised Director's Performance Appraisal Process, I want to thank everyone who volunteered to be on the committee going forward. That's six of us, which is lovely. We're allowed up to seven. And I would like to ask if there's any debate.
Trustee Baxter.
Thank you. Through the Chair, I have a question about, sorry, I'm just finding it, why there is mention of a steering committee and why the role is so prescriptive in the terms of reference. There is not a requirement in the reg to have a steering committee. And as far as I can remember, which might be flawed, I don't think we've discussed previously the existence of a steering committee on the DPA Committee. It's not currently in the GP as far as I know. The regulation stipulates only that the Chair of the Committee and at least one other member of the Committee meets with the Director to develop and finalize their performance plan. So I was just a bit surprised to see that. I would propose, as we've done with other committees in the past, that the terms of reference be developed by the Committee itself at its first meeting as opposed to being included in the motion tonight.
Okay, the reason why we've included a Chair, Vice Chair and Secretary is because that's the format that we use with our committees and we wanted to streamline in an effort to make sure that all committees are considered in the same way. The reason for the steering committee portion of it is simply because the Chair has to go to the Director with at least one other trustee. And it made sense to then just make it those three or two because the Vice Chair is not required, it may have a Vice Chair. And so that makes it so a consistent other person would be going with the Chair. It doesn't have to be in the regulation. We can go over and above what's in the regulation. As long as we do the bare minimum, we're fine. And at Halton, we always like to do more. Yep.
So I understand the logic of the Chair and Secretary, Vice Chair, that kind of thing. I just don't understand why there is a steering committee prescribed that's within its role is to meet with the Director. Because we're being prescriptive here and I'm not really understanding why the regulation allows for the entire Committee to meet with the Director to develop and finalize their performance plan. It's just the Chair and at least. So I'm just wondering what the purpose of being so prescriptive is, especially since we haven't discussed this before. I'll let you respond to that, thank you.
It's partly logistics. When you have six people on a Committee, it becomes unwieldy to try and book appointments with the Director. Director's schedule is hectic enough and as our own are as well. Trying to get six trustees to meet with the Director is unwieldy and the requirement is only the Chair plus one. So the Chair plus one or two seemed a good middle ground.
So respectfully, I would just disagree with being so prescriptive at this point. That kind of conversation, I would have thought, would have happened at Committee. Not in the steering committee process itself. So I'm a bit concerned. And the fact that we haven't seen it before.
We don't have the GP updated yet. And because of that, we don't have any of the new stuff in the GP. This was put together based on our best thinking of how the Committee could behave. And it's quite normal for our Committees to operate where the Chair, Vice Chair and Secretary work together a little bit more than the whole Committee. It's just a normal way of functioning for this Board. Okay?
Trustee Bryden.
Furthering trustee Baxter's point, given that this procedure is not in place, it does make sense to me to defer the conversation to the Committee. As such, I would, and I don't know what the rest of the room is going to think, but I'm going to put it on the table. I would motion that we amend the, sorry, let me just take a quick look here. Oh, I'm going to have to ask for some input from a parliamentarian. The motion is be it resolved that the striking committee report appended to Report 24113 be approved. I want to amend what we are approving by striking the Terms of Reference section. This is then amending a report. But we need to be able to amend the substantive content of what we're doing. Could you please provide how we should do this?
The motion wouldn't amend the report. The approval could just read, sorry, let me just pull it up. Be it resolved that the striking committee report appended to Report 24113 be approved, or sorry, 24113 with the exception of the Terms of Reference section be approved. And then so just create an exception clause in there.
Thank you, that would be my motion.
I'm just looking up our GP to make sure that a Terms of Reference isn't required because I do think it is. So just give me a minute. A resolution to form a Committee shall state the following, which will collectively form the Committee's Terms of Reference, the purpose of the Committee, the scope of the Committee's work and the date by which the Committee will report to the Board and frequency of Committee reports. So some of that is what's in that Terms of Reference. So is there something specific that you wanted to remove from the Terms of Reference that doesn't fall under that scope? I would be amenable to removing the third bullet if that makes it easier.
Yep. So with the exception of the third bullet in Section 3.1.
Is there a second or for this motion?
Trustee Baxter? You can't ask a question until it's on the floor.
Yes, I will second.
Okay, thank you. Now, I'm going to clear this speaking list because we're now on to a different motion. So just remember that you had wanted to speak. Speakers to the amendment. Trustee Rocha.
Through the Chair, seeing as how we're amending this report, would it be advisable that we defer this conversation to Committee of the Whole? Because from my recollection, isn't the GP also in need of updating due to all of the Ministry regulations?
And that will be coming to Committee of the Whole soon.
So are we not putting the cart before the horse in that we're going to be setting Terms of Reference for a GP that hasn't been updated and approved? Or maybe we should look at both of these items in conjunction so that we make a more?
This Terms of Reference is not applicable to anything beyond the term of this Committee, which ends on August 31st of next year. It has nothing to do with what goes into the GP. This was just our best thinking for this year's Committee. It has nothing to do with what goes into the GP. The Committee needs to be struck. We passed a motion back in, I think it was May, it might have been June, that we would strike this Committee in September. If we take out the third bullet, that removes your concern. And I am amenable to that.
That's fine.
Okay. Trustee Baxter.
Thank you through the Chair. I am obviously a seconded and I'm also amenable to removing. I'd also just ask if we should be deferring because in Bullet 1, under the Terms of Reference, we refer to the GP, but we're not complying with the GP as written. So I'm a bit concerned. The GP as written sets a maximum of five trustees that can serve on this Committee, but we are putting six, which complies with the reg but doesn't comply with the GP.
The reg trumps our GP. Always. Okay? Is there any other debate regarding this item? Okay, I'll put the question on the floor. Is the motion to amend on there? Okay. Where is it?
Point of order, could you please repeat the amended motion? Thank you.
I will, as soon as I have it.
Thank you very much.
Yes, now I see it. That the motion be amended to read as follows. Be it resolved that the striking committee report appended to Report 24113 with the exception of the third bullet under item 3.1 Terms of Reference be approved. So we are just now voting on the amendment, not the main motion.
Point of order, can you remove the word appended? Because there's no report appended to this.
But that was the word that trustee Bryden used and that's why it's in there. So, yeah. So yes, it's not appended. So it would be the Committee Report in Report 24113. Okay, so please cast your votes.
Trustee Shalaworth? Okay. Okay. Thank you, that vote passed unanimously. And now becomes the main motion. Be it resolved that the striking committee report in Report 24113 with the exception of the third bullet under item 3.1 Terms of Reference be approved. And that was moved and seconded already. So we will vote on this motion. Trustee Oshu, are you okay on that one?
Perfect, thank you. And that passes unanimously, thank you very much. The next item is 4.1.5 Financial Advocacy Standing Committee, Report 24114, submitted by Chair Collard and trustee Amos. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees establish a financial advocacy standing Committee in accordance with Section 4.2 of the Appointments to Committees and Other Rules Governance Procedure and Report 24114. And that the Appointments to Committees and Other Rules Governance Procedure be amended to reflect these changes. Trustee Amos, would you make this motion?
Yes, please.
Trustee Bryden, would you second this motion?
Yes.
Trustee Amos, would you like to speak to this report?
Yes, thank you, through you. So the reasoning behind making this a standing Committee is we have had in some form or other a Committee advocating for our Board since around 2004. So that's 20 years of trying to create public awareness, create connections with the MPPs, create awareness for the MPPs to try and advocate for more funding for our Board. As many of you know, because this is a repeated theme, we have been either the lowest, second lowest or now third lowest funded Board in the last 20 or more years. And until that changes, we are going to have to continuously advocate to try and make sure that we have the appropriate funding for this Board. So in our thinking, it was we might as well have a standing Committee because we're going to have to continue this until we have a government that will actually recognize what the funding for school board should be and have it fair. So that is the thinking behind the motion.
Are there any speakers? Is there any debate? Trustee Rocha.
Through you Chair. So I want to first off acknowledge the fact that we've had some sort of advocacy happening for the last two decades. And the needle hasn't moved, other than public awareness. So I'm looking at the Terms of Reference and it says enhance public awareness. We've done that. Work with local MPPs, we've done that. Develop a working relationship with the Minister, we've done that. So I'm wondering, what's our next goal? Because if for the last two years, we've been doing the same thing, nothing's happened, where do we go from here? And is it really the work of this Committee to keep doing it? Or maybe the Terms of Reference need to reflect what the true goal is so that that goal can be accomplished? So I'm having a hard time making this a standing Committee because this would have been standing for 20 years if we had done this the first time around. So what is it that we really, what result do we want to see? And how are we going to work towards that result so that we can say, yes, this Committee was effective? Yeah, so that's my question. What is it beyond the scope of what's written in this report that the Committee wants to accomplish?
Trustee Amos.
Thank you. So part of the Committee work is to also make trustees aware of what the funding, how it affects our Board. On top of what our fantastic Superintendent of Finance does, bringing us the regular reports and the end of year budget. Because it is part of our job to actually be advocating on behalf of the Board to make sure that we get the funding we need so that we can make sure every student is supported the best they can be. And so the next steps are to continue. We've been trying to provide a foundation. And when part of the conversation with the MPPs was to with the MPPs was to try and explain where we were, and we actually felt that maybe they were listening and that they were going to go away, but the conversation needs to continue. It can't just stop. And so we need to be able to continue that. And so by having this committee, we are committing to continuing that path. Because my concern is, I have brought this motion multiple times to the board to have an ad hoc committee, and unless someone is willing to keep doing that by having a standing committee, which we can say, we've had many standing committees, we've had communication, we've had transportation, we've had, I can't even remember all of them. But anyways, as they're not needed, they, they are, we get, we get rid of them. So there's no saying that if we feel that we don't need this committee, that committee anymore, that we can't get rid of it. So it is to make sure that we are trying to continue the path for the board to continue to advocate. And that's why it's a committee, because then you do brainstorming to try and see what other things we can be doing to try and continue on what we should do next. The committees, right now, part of it is we have to reach out to the community and do some more education and advocacy because, and then to continue up with the MPP. So there are next steps for the committee that exist right now, but, I mean, I guess the thought was that because this is such important work, it should be an advocacy, it should be a standing committee, which reports back to the whole Board of Trustees.
I'd like to tag on, yes, it was partly to elevate the importance of this by making it a standing committee. It is shown as being a standing committee. It means that this is an important committee for our board, and that the work that is being done by this committee is highly valued. And I know that when we met with the MPPs a few months ago, they actually conceded that we had received a little bit more, I think it was 0.9% more than what we were supposed to receive, because they recognized that our board had been underfunded for several years. And, and I would defer to Superintendent Nagoy, if she could perhaps elaborate on that. She knows it so much better than I do.
Thank you for the, Chair. It does take, you know, a continuous effort to have the conversation going with the MPPs, the ministry, in terms of the pressures. The pressures continue, and I think it's important that they continue to hear that. They hear that from us, from a staffing perspective and speaking with ministry staff. They are hearing it through the directors and code and through Director Ennis, and they're hearing it through the trustee association. So the school boards as well are continuing to send that message, and it's important to, to have that presence and that continuous message in terms of where the funding challenges are on the ground. In terms of the additional funding, as trustee Amos mentioned, we are no longer the second lowest, but the third lowest, and some of that is in the core education funding. They have started to use the new census data, and I do believe that the changing demographic of our region is starting to show in that funding formula. So it's, it's giving us a little bit of, of that funding that we should have had as, as our region had changed. So that is a bit of good news, but that doesn't change the fact that we still are, as a sector, we have some significant areas that are underfunded.
Thank you.
Point of order.
Yes?
Trustee Baxter is incorrectly marked as a second time speaker here. She was on the list after trustee Rocha.
Okay, we will go to trustee Baxter then, and I'm sorry, trustee Shuttlerworth, you'll wait. Okay. Okay, I must have forgotten to press reset.
Thank you for noticing that. Full disclosure, I didn't, so I was not upset. Thank you through the chair. I would like to start by expressing deep appreciation for the ad hoc committee that operated last year, and for Superintendent Nagoy, obviously, the work that you did was important. I would be fully in support of forming ad hoc committees going forward. There was not one established when this term began, but it, it obviously was established later on. Financial advocacy is not part of the trustee role specifically. Advocacy for public education is, but financial advocacy is not. Obviously, we do endeavor to build relationships and share information with our MPPs, and we allocate a considerable amount of funding to OBSPA that also delivers this message on our behalf. Given the long list of responsibilities that are prescribed in the Ad Act, I'm not sure it's appropriate or feasible to create another standing committee. As I said, advocacy for public education is certainly our role, and I think we're all very committed to it, but financial advocacy, I think, is something better specifically defined, and, and is defined as the role of Director Ennis and Superintendent Nagoy, and they do a very good job of it. They're perfectly suited to do so in that they possess the information and the tools they need to make business cases to the ministry, which, you know, as we've heard, were successful this year. So thank you again. I'm not in support of the motion only that I don't think we need another standing committee, but I am very much in support of forming ad hoc committees as we have in the past going forward when, when and if needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Shuttlerworth. Thank you through you, Chair, to trustee Amos, as well as Superintendent Nagoy. Again, echoing both trustee Rocha and trustee Baxter's sentiments, I appreciate all the work that you've been doing. However, as trustee Rocha pointed out, this has been going on for 20 years, and we haven't seen the needle move. And I always bring this up during budget, we're always approving these budgets, saying we can be creative and we can make things work. So being the lowest funded board, we're always able to make it work for us. So that's part of the reason why, I assume, they don't give us more money, because we're seen as creative and nimble and able to, to change things. So I do wonder if there is a way to shift how we are approaching this. Again, I think we've done an amazing job. I remember, I don't remember, we had those pre-new people, those, we had those town halls at community centers, and it was, the, the community came out, and we're in full support. Then COVID happened, and so we kind of lost that momentum. But I'm wondering if we, like, again, I think about when we have goals. If something's not working, don't keep doing the same thing. We need to shift the way we approach something so that it works, just like learning. So I look at the different purposes that are here, and somewhat similar to trustee Rocha, I wonder how can we change the focus to make things work in a more effective way? I, I don't know. It's a question that I don't know that there's an answer to, but I think by approving our budgets every year as well, in the deficits that we're in, we're sending mixed messages because we're saying we can do it, but now we're saying we can't. So how are we, how are we bridging that gap between yes, we can, and no, we can't with the money that we're afforded? So those are just things that go through my head. I do not lose sleep, but I do think about this often. How are, how are we as a board supporting our push for more support and more funding by constantly approving budgets that are underfunded? Just my two cents. Thank you very much. Thank you. Trustee Gray.
This past week, almost all of the calls, and last week, almost all of the calls I've had have been from parents, and it's all around issues that could be rectified if we had more money. So I cannot see how it isn't our role as trustees to move the dial in any way possible to advocate, to continue the conversation, to publicize, like trustee Shuttlerworth said, maybe to change the focus, but that would be something that we would expect out of a committee, a standing committee, one that would be there in place and able to try to do different things over time. There is frustration, because perhaps we haven't moved the dial, but let's look at it the other way. If we hadn't been advocated the way we had, we might even be worse than we are. So to the point here, that we're making things work, yes, we are making things work, but how much more could we make work if we had more money? And so I support this motion. I really do think that a standing committee is what we should have, and I think it would be the most effective way forward. It's all about our role, and again, as I said earlier, follow the money, because the money makes the difference. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Gray. Trustee Bryden.
Thank you. I'm struck by some of the conversation about this advocacy going back 20 years, and there really are two threads when it comes to talking about how our board is funded. And one is how education is funded across the province, and the other is how our board is funded in relation to other boards. And when it comes to education funding across the province, I'm struck by the, one evaluator who, who I worked with, who talked about the difference between impact and attribution. And, and when something is outside of your scope of control, you can't say, this was because of me, but you can do your part. It's kind of like when we talk about global warming and say, yeah, Canada's only 2% of greenhouse gas emissions globally, but that's not an excuse for us not to do our part. We have to do our part. So from that perspective, judging, judging Halton's success by what's happening Ontario-wide is, is not exactly right, but it's, we are contributing to that conversation. Looking back over that 20-year period, funding has increased dramatically between 2002, 2003, and 2010, 2011. Inflation adjusted per student funding at our board went up almost 25%, and then it flatlined, and then it dropped. So if we're judging success over the 20-year period, you kind of have to look at what's happening in the political environment. And from that perspective, to me, the next two years are actually vital, whereas we're coming up to whenever the next provincial election comes, we don't know when that's going to be, and then whatever the government is after that provincial election. Those will be key points of shaping the public conversation around, around what that larger funding environment is. And to the point of Halton's funding in relation to, to the rest of the province, actually, I think that's where we do have a success story to talk about. As Superintendent Nagoy said, the, the biggest thing that they have done is change the funding formula by changing the data going into it, and that was one of our key asks. So that, that is something that potentially we can say, yeah, I don't, again, was that because of us? Not necessarily, but can we say we, we raised our voice and pushed it forward as an issue? Yes. My big question actually is, do we have the people power to do this? If we're putting this in as a standing committee, I, I would just ask for a quick show of hands of who, you know, this is not striking committee yet, but who might be interested in serving on this committee? That looks like possibly the makeup of committees to me. Okay.
Thank you. Vice Chair Oliver.
Yeah, thanks trustee Bryden. Student achievement and well-being is our responsibility, and fiduciary responsibility resides in our role. And so, you know, if we want our students to be successful, and if we want our staff to be able to implement the multi-year plan that we develop, we need adequate funding. And I think that's something that we always have to keep in mind and advocate for. We, we want to build confidence in public education. Public education is funded by public funds. And as you well know, parent groups change. We have new parents every year. We have new elected members. We have new ministers of education. And so it is, you know, the onus is on us to keep the conversation going, to keep advocating. This is the one advocacy that resides well within our role, because it meets the responsibilities that we are entrusted with. And so we do need to keep that alive. It is, it is imperative that we, we do raise the issues and that we point out the deficits, and we continue to work with our government to ensure that public education receives adequate funding, and not just in Halton, but in the province overall. And I think if we do our part, we're certainly adding to, to, you know, where the province can, can rise to.
Thank you, vice chair Oliver, and trustee Amos.
Thank you. I just wanted to respond to a comment that I heard that financial advocacy is not our responsibility. I would totally disagree, because trustees are responsible for passing the budget. And as such, we are therefore responsible for making awareness about what that budget entails and what it doesn't entail, and why it is the way it is. And some of that does include advocacy, because currently, we're now going down the road of, it's not including some of the things that we need, because there is not that financial piece. And some of it is just that education piece to the community and to our MPPs about why those changes are happening and what they can do to help us maybe change that.
Thank you. Just about everyone's spoken on this, I just want to ask trustee Zhang, do you have anything you'd like to add? Trustee Ahmed, would you like to add anything to the conversation?
No, I'm good, I'm good. Thanks a lot.
Okay. Then we will vote. That passes. It is not unanimous. There was one dissenting vote, trustee Baxter. All the rest were in favor. Thank you very much. Okay, so now we're up to Section 5.0, Communication to the Board. We have two items of information for this evening. 5.1.1 Iroquois Ridge High School Consultation Update, Report 24115, submitted by Dr. Beshaglia, Manager Francie, and Director Ennis. Would any of the three of you like to speak to this report? Dr. Beshaglia?
I'll start. Thank you. Thanks, Chair Collard. Trustees, before you, you have a report, 24115, you know, out of an abundance of care, harm mitigation, and listening to voices, we have provided for you the work that we have been doing since the motion was passed, and we are open to take any questions.
Trustee Bryden.
Thank you. A couple of questions. First, you appropriately responded to a motion that asked you about a survey. The conversation that happened around that motion was a lot in Senator, using the student voices.
Speaking to the Iroquois Ridge
Sorry.
Consultation? Do you have a question regarding that report?
I do.
Okay, go ahead. I'll start you fresh.
The purpose of the consultation was to determine whether or not it is necessary to initiate, initiate the renaming process. I note in this report that you present the results of the consultation absent a recommendation on whether or not it is necessary to, to initiate the renaming process. Does, is staff taking a position on whether it is necessary?
Certainly, we don't believe that it's staff's decision to make a, a recommendation, but trustees to make that. Certainly, as we have the conversation this evening, I'm prepared to make, you know, some, some statements supporting that direction, whatever trustees decide. I'm happy to add some my thoughts to that, but we think it's, it's the trustees' role.
I might I might just add to that, that currently there is no motion on our books regarding this, so a trustee would have to make a motion for it to become an, an issue for the board to vote on again. If there is no motion, then nothing happens, and, and this is finished. If there is no motion, then nothing happens, and, and this is, um, finished. Trustee Rocha.
Yes, thank you. So, um, I'd like to begin by thanking you for the due diligence in reaching out to the various Indigenous peoples, scholars, and communities on this topic, and providing diverse perspectives. Back in March, a motion was brought to the board recommending that Iroquois Ridge High School be renamed, because Iroquois, and I quote, "is seen as a derogatory term and is not respectful of Indigenous people," end quote. Sadly, that motion passed, but not unanimously. Then in April, trustees passed a motion requesting that the HDSB do further consultation, which brings us to this evening's report, which includes, and I quote, "Some individuals recommend that the term Iroquois remain as it aligns with their individual identity," end quote. As well as, again, I quote, "Others expressed that while they understand the term as pejorative, they do not take offense, and posited that removing the name amounts to erasure," end quote. This leads me to my concern with the HDSB's methodology, in that trustees only received this evening's report, because in April trustees rescinded the March motion, and subsequently made a motion for further consultation with the Indigenous community. So my question is, how can we assure the public that going forward, the HDSB will always properly consult Indigenous people and communities on matters that impact them?
Uh, thank you for the question, trustee Rocha. I, I want to first start by, uh, thanking the Board of Trustees for, um, helping us to look at the policy, the governance procedure, and the administrative procedures, um, that pertains to renaming, as you know. And we have used the, uh, current, um, policy, governance procedure, and administrative procedures. When there is agreement and consensus, it works beautifully. What we have learned, both trustees and staff, is that when there isn't that consensus and agreement, it doesn't work so well. And so that is why it was necessary for trustees to give us further direction, because the current procedures that we have just did not entail what we were asked to do now. And so we are thankful for that work, we did that work, and we've heard divergent voices on it. But, and so that's why it's before you again.
If I can follow up, um, seeing as how that there's been a recognition that our policies and procedures may not be up to par, what work is being done to ensure that this situation like this, um, doesn't happen again?
I'm going to defer to trustee Bryden to respond, um, as the chair of the Governance Document Review Standing Committee.
Thank you. Um, the GDR Committee has taken us, an extensive look at, uh, the, uh, existing, uh, procedure, and, uh, has drafted significant changes. That document is coming to September committee of the whole. So next week, um, the revisions should be in front of us. Uh, and then presume if they proceed from there, would go to October board meeting for, for ratification.
All right, thank you. And regarding the AP, would you like to comment, Director Ennis?
The, um, AP will certainly follow the direction from, and, uh, in alignment with the policy and governance procedure.
Do you have any other questions, trustee Rocha?
I do have more commentary, but, um, if there's anyone else on the speakers list, I will defer to them to speak next, and then I'll go back on the speakers list.
Thank you very much. Trustee Baxter.
Uh, thank you, through the chair. Um, I, I guess to Director Ennis, I just wanted to ask, um, what was the reaction that you received from the Indigenous community members that you consulted with? And I ask this because, um, I remember I was quite affected at that very first meeting when we looked at this motion, because trustees were told that if we were to ask questions about the conclusion that the name was derogatory, that we would be causing harm. And so I found, and I don't know if any other trustees felt, a little bit torn between our responsibility and obligation to ask questions and have conversation, as well as our personal commitment to not cause harm. And so I'm just wondering, um, when you did this consultation and reached out to, um, many members of, of Indigenous communities, did you hear any concern about being asked about this? Or did you receive, um, positive feedback to the fact that you were consulting? Thank you.
Uh, thank you for the question. Um, certainly, there is always an appreciation, um, for those with whom we spoke. We, we received, uh, positive feedback about, um, you know, engaging them in that, uh, work and consultation. But, uh, to be, to be clear, um, the elevation of the conversation, uh, we, we, we have heard that it does cause harm to some people when it, when we elevate the conversation, and it creates a divide as well. And so we, we've heard both sides. But generally speaking, whether there were for or against, people were always, Indigenous communities were always in favor of, um, having their voices heard.
Trustee Shalaworth.
Uh, thank you, through your chair, to Director Ennis. Um, I just want to, you, you spoke just a moment ago about when people disagree, it doesn't work. I think that's a mischaracter, I think that this situation, where we were not all in consensus, actually caused us to look deeper. And I think, instead of it being negative, I actually think of it as quite a positive, because we were able to do our due diligence and take that deeper dive into what the words behind the motion meant. I do sometimes feel, because we are such a amicable bunch, amicable bunch, and we often agree and pass things unanimously, that those deeper conversations don't always happen. And I think it was a really positive piece in seeing through finding those middle grounds and finding those roads forward, we were able to do that. So I don't necessarily think of it as a negative, I think of it as a positive.
If I could just quickly respond, I agree with you, uh, Chair, uh, trustee Shalaworth, I, I agree with you.
It's been a year.
I know, it takes me longer sometimes. I, I agree with you wholeheartedly on that. It's, um, it, it's when, it's when communities, uh, don't agree, and that it becomes, that, that showed us that we needed to do deeper work that you spoke of.
And again, a quick follow-up to that, again, I think it's really important, because even through that dissension between community and board, I think you're able to make those relationships stronger, because they see that you're listening, they see that you're doing the work that they've asked you to do. And I think that, again, reflects well on the board, rather than in a negative sense. So again, thank you so much for everything that you did. In moving this agenda forward, in looking at the bigger picture, which kind of came to light at the last, or, is that a year ago? Has to be close to a year ago, October? I think it was, so, almost a year ago, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Shalaworth, and moving on to trustee Zhang.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. So in this report, actually, there's a very important, uh, fact, it was revealed, that is, if we do further study and we can find more diverse opinions, because we are all people, people believe something strongly support or strongly against it in the, in, in the country, in, in the society, you can always find two different opinion. So, but for this study, we are studying on the word Iroquois, because this is a cultural background and has its history. So for this word, I believe the most important person, group to, to, to do the survey, that's the Iroquois Six Nation people. If the Six Nation people, most of them says, it's, they're okay, so that's okay. Because this, only the local people, the native people, they understand their history and their language. And for other people, so we, like me, I learn, I read, I read a lot of Indigenous book, but this, everything is from one opinion, from the author. So, uh, even I, I read those books and, uh, I did, uh, my research from the, the Six Nation, their museum, there's a New York, uh, New York state, they have a museum. So they have a lot of videos and articles to, to introduce, introduce the, the history. I learned that, so I know they have a, a lot of different opinion there. But for local people, because we are considering Six Nation, they live in Halton region. So Halton region, Six Nation is most important to us, or surrounding area. So if they are saying it's okay, so I think we don't need to spend more money and do more research. Otherwise, if they do think this is harmful, the language, then we need to, they need, they can present us the reasons, then we do the further studies to see, we, if we need to continue, uh, the study or change, start the, the renaming process or not. So for now, because this is report, it says, we will, we already find a lot of different opinions. So for further action, I think just, uh, focus on the local Six Nation people, their opinion. So that's most important. So we, we, we serve for the people, and if they think that's okay, that's okay. If they think it, it's, it's bad, then we, we can start the renaming. That's simple. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Zhang, and going back to trustee Rocha.
Uh, thank you, through you, Chair. Um, so Director Ennis, so, based on this report, and that we do have diverse perspectives, is it then your recommendation to leave the name as is? And I'm asking for your opinion, I know it is up to the trustees, but I'm going to ask your opinion.
I, I think that in order to, um, necessitate the healing, uh, bringing people together, not causing further harm, uh, it would be my, um, my recommendation, support for, um, leaving things as they are at this time.
Okay, I, I truly, truly appreciate that response. Um, over the last month, over the last few months, I, I have spoken to individuals who identify as Iroquois, as well as members of, uh, the Six Nations of the Grand River. And I would like to go on record that I affirm their identity and vehemently oppose the renaming of Iroquois Ridge High School. So based on this evening's report, that is more fulsome, um, and some of our conversations this evening, and also as we approach September 30th, which is the National Day for Truth and Reconciliation, I would like to make two recommendations, if I may. First, um, I would like the HDSB website, in particular, the Our Schools page, updated to include Iroquois Ridge High School in the school naming history section. Currently, we list many of our schools, their names and the history, but Iroquois Ridge is absent from that list, I would like to have it added, if you are so agreeable. Um, and second, um, I may need a motion for this, I may not, but hear me out. I would like a commemorative plaque erected at Iroquois Ridge High School to provide historical context and information about the origin and significance of the school's name, so that students, staff, and members of the public who walk into the school know about the school's heritage and the reasons behind its naming. Thank you.
Trustee Rocha, I'd like to second that motion. Is there any discussion regarding that motion? Trustee Bryden.
The... Sorry, I, I jumped on the button quickly. There's, there's a lot, um, hanging for me on this. Uh, not on, that's, I'm, I'm struggling for my words. Earlier in the evening, we heard an excerpt from the report that skipped over a line, that said, "Well, some individuals recommend that the term Iroquois remain as it aligns with their individual identity."
Trustee Bryden, are you speaking to the motion, or are you speaking to the report?
I'm speaking to the motion.
Okay, just making sure.
Uh, well, others view the term as outdated and pejorative, and suggest that it would be beneficial to replace it. What we heard is that there are divided perspectives on this. I am not certain that elevating, uh, with a commemorative plaque, when part of our community says, "Ooh, that name stains," is the right thing to do. And I've spoken to a handful of folks, some here, some there, some who say, "Use whatever word you want in English, my word is Nkwehomwe." That's the word I'm going to keep using. Uh, so, you know, you, you're going to get a variety of perspectives? I'm, uh, yeah, I, I guess, in, in, given this division and, and the challenge that Director Ennis has identified of the tension that exists around this piece of language, I'm, I'm not, I'm not closed to the idea, but it, it doesn't strike me as, as one that I immediately support.
Trustee Gray.
Yeah, um, thank you, trustee Bryden, you pretty much took the words out of my mouth. Reading this, um, talks to me of a tension that exists of, whereas we have some that feel one way, some that feel another way. I think the addition of a plaque could just elevate and bring more attention to something that probably is best left alone at this point. Would be my viewpoint.
Thank you, trustee Oliver, or Vice Chair Oliver.
Uh, thank you, I'd like to echo sentiments expressed by trustee Gray and Bryden. I also wanted to remind trustees that in the 2018 to 22 term, trustees at the time, who worked on the school naming and renaming, uh, policy, did talk about, um, the importance of, um, having a way to document, uh, the school's name, the history behind it, um, and any subsequent naming or renaming that might have happened. So that has already been flagged, and that should be a standard practice for all schools, and not anyone in particular highlighted. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Shalaworth.
Uh, thank you, through you, Chair. Um, actually, Vice Chair Oliver brought in, is that kind of like it woven to where I'm going? Because I'm looking back to when we renamed Ryerson to McQuendum. And it was renamed, and the name was just gone. Again, I think it's really important that we're not erasing history. I think we need to recognize that the school, if, if we're doing plaques, which I don't know whether that's the right way to go or not, but we need to do it fulsomely, fulsomely. We need to do it so that if there are other schools that have been renamed, explaining why. And again, giving credit where credit is due. Egerton Ryerson did many great things, but he did many not-so-great things too. And we can't forget those pieces as well. So I think if we're looking at memorializing pieces, we need to look at that as a whole school situation. Just my two cents, again.
Trustee Amos.
Thank you, through you. So I know on our website, we do have a page that gives the history behind the names, and I actually just went to it, but Iroquois Ridge isn't there. But I do know it was called that because of the land it was on. So that was the history of it, as opposed to, um, being around specific peoples. But then, that was because that was the shoreline of the, um, Iroquois, um, lake that was, used to be there. So if there is something that should be shared, maybe that's the place to share it, because that's the history of all the, the names of the schools. And if that, if it's appropriate or not, um, I guess that, that's the decision that would need to be made.
Okay, trustee Baxter.
Thank you, uh, through the chair. I'm definitely in support of better education. I think that's maybe what we learned, is, um, as has been highlighted, there's many different pieces of information and perspectives that we didn't know in March. And I'm just wondering if, um, as trustee Rocha has mentioned, that there is value for, at least at minimum, the community of that school to understand what the name is and what it means to different people, and where it came from, and the historical context. So I'm not sure a plaque is the right thing, but I am in support of the spirit of the educational piece, and wonder, not to, to create work for staff, but, um, to, uh, direct it to Director Ennis, is there an initiative or, um, a policy operationally to educate school communities about the names of their schools when they're not something obviously, like Pine Grove? I mean, I don't think you have to educate anyone on that. But, but if the school is named after, um, a person, which many of our schools are, is there an initiative on an annual basis to provide that information? initiative on an annual basis to provide that information? And if not, could we perhaps look at something that I think might fulfill the spirit? I don't want to take trustee Rocha's idea away, but something to achieve education, whether it's a plaque or some other function.
So we don't currently, trustee Baxter, through the chair, we don't currently have an annual education piece around school names, but to trustee Rocha's earlier comment, we do have many of the school names, the history and context of it on our school website, with the exception of a few. So we will look at that more wholesomely. But it is there for everyone to access that information and to learn more.
Okay, that exhausts our speakers list. Trustee Rocha, did you wish to make any comment at this time?
Through you, Chair. I think the only comment I want to make is that I think that this process has really taught us that we can't solely rely on the word of one group when it comes to matters that are indigenous. We need to consult beyond, beyond our treaty partner. And I'm glad that further consultation was done, and that these results were brought forward to us, so that we can see that we, as trustees, should not be making decisions about indigenous terms without speaking to the appropriate indigenous people. So this report has been helpful. I hope that our discussion is over, that the school will not be renamed, and no one, none of us are going to bring a motion to rename it. We'll leave it as is. If people are not in favor for commemorative plaque, that's fine, that's something that we, as a board, but it's not going to stop the school from doing whatever they want. So maybe that's a conversation I can have with the principal. And maybe it's on a plaque, maybe it's a poster, maybe it's something. But as long as people who walk in into the school realize where the name came from, why was the school named Iroquois Ridge, and give that history and that significance? Because it's not just the school that's named Iroquois Ridge, there's a lot of other buildings and streets in that area that have the term Iroquois used. So it's a good education piece for the public at large. So I think that's all I need to say. Thank you.
Trustee Rocha, do you wish to proceed with the motion?
Sure, why not? So I'll make the motion. Be it resolved that a plaque be erected at Iroquois Ridge High School to provide historical context and information about the origin and significance of the school's name, so that students, staff, and members of the public who walk into the school know about the school's heritage and the reasons behind its naming. And I so move.
And I did second that. So if it's in creston? Thank you very much, and that is not unanimous. Yes, votes include trustee Zhang, trustee Collard, trustee Baxter, trustee Rocha, and votes in the negative, trustee Amos, trustee Bryden, trustee Gray, trustee Shuttleworth, trustee Oliver. And it's a, still, if it's a tie, it's defeated on a tie. Would you please tell me what your vote is, trustee Amos?
Well, it's in favor.
Okay, so it was in favor, but it is defeated on a tie, and the two student trustees also voted in favor. Thank you very much. That concludes that item. Is there any other discussion regarding this report, before we move on to the next Seeing none, we will move on to the 5.1.2, feasibility of conducting an antisemitism survey by a third party, report 24116, submitted by Dr. Bishaglia and Director Ennis. Dr. Bishaglia and Director Ennis, would you like to speak to this report?
Thank you so much, Chair Collard. To the trustees, we have report 24116 before you. You asked us to conduct a feasibility. We believe we have provided a fulsome report. I have Dr. Bishaglia here, who will, is there anything you'd like to highlight, Dr. Bishaglia, before the trustees? You have the report before you. We're happy to take any questions.
How did I know your name would pop up? Trustee Bryden.
Because I asked the wrong question last time. Okay, the aforementioned pair of questions. First off, the motion you responded to referred to a survey. A lot of the conversation used the Student Voices report as a model, which was a focus group model. If we were pursuing alternate forms of data collection, focus groups, interviews, et cetera, do the conclusions of your report hold, or are they specifically about survey data collection? There is a lot that's specific about survey data collection.
Through Madam Chair, yes, the report was written to respond to a motion pertaining to a survey. And certainly, there's pieces that speak directly to the survey platform, the server, and so forth. But there are many other considerations, such as third-party agreements, procurement processes, data sharing agreements, consent, all of those pieces that would apply to other methodologies. The challenge in developing this report was that the scope of the work was not defined. What was provided was a request around the feasibility of a survey. Surveys can also entail qualitative data, that in itself would, you know, would involve different considerations. But I would say that most of the content would also apply to other forms of data collection.
Thank you. Second question, Student Voices was explicitly about experiences of racism, but was open to students of all identities. In fact, 17% of the participants did not identify as racialized. If we gather information on experiences of antisemitism, would we target our data collection to Jewish identifying students?
Through Madam Chair, so the Student Voice report was about HDSP's response to anti-black racism. And as such, we felt that it was appropriate with regard to the scope of work to also gather the voices of students that would be in classrooms viewing educators' responses to racist incidents. At that time, we had just launched the Discriminatory Language Protocol, and so it was deemed appropriate to also open up the methodology to students who did not identify as Black. So this is why it's so important to define the scope of work, because it literally defines all the other aspects of the research methodology. So if the question at hand is experiences of antisemitism, then it would follow that the recruitment would be of students who identify as Jewish.
Any follow-up to that? Okay, and trustee Zhang.
Thank you, Chair. So I have a lot of questions. So before I ask the questions, so I-
One at a time, please.
So I believe, before doing the, conducting a survey or research, doesn't matter, this is, we hire a third-party organization, or we do that by HDSP research team. That's a very important term. This is antisemitism, we need to have a definition. Because this, this definition is about, is about the scope of work. If we have no definition, so nobody know what is, we need to do. Because we can understand in this way, the other person, you understand the word in a different way, or research team, consider this as common sense, I understand this way, and the third party, without negotiation, they have their own definition. So in our procedure, or any, at least somewhere in our policy or procedure, we have, we need to have a definition. So, for example, you know, like the school, in the, there's some violence can happen. So do we realize the assault in our procedure, in our policy, and the definition of assault in criminal code are different? So in criminal code, it must be intentional, and in our procedure, it doesn't need to be intentional, not be on purpose. Any, cause any hurts, injury can be considered assault. So that's, that's why first thing is, we need to have a definition.
Do you have a question, though?
So, yes, my first question. First question is, we, there's a privacy consideration. So in privacy consideration, we need to put all data in a server, on server in Canada. So, but we have a lot in HDSP, sometime we collected student information update using Google Form. How can we ensure all those information, keep those information in Canada?
Thank you. I believe that question should go to Superintendent Shawss.
Sure, yeah, so through the chair. The requirements for data protection under MFPa, we are actually a little bit different. There is, there is actually no requirement to maintain the data in Canada, but it is best practice. And so we would, we would ensure that we contract with a vendor who maintains the storage in Canada, the retention records follow, ideally Ontario, but Canadian privacy legislation and so on.
Okay, so my second question is, on the, on the report, page 10, it mentions, so every year, we have a survey tool. After one year study, we find a tool, so it meets all the legal requirements. And we, we spend $45,000 a year for a fee for this tool. So I'd like to know how many research we study, we do using this tool every year? And this is because we need to consider the budget and how the best way to use the money. Thank you.
Thank you, through Madam Chair. So the tool that you're mentioning is Qualtrics. And Qualtrics is a survey platform that we license, or purchased the license to use back in 2021, when we first conducted the first student census. At that time, Qualtrics was the only survey platform that met all of our privacy requirements, and we research worked very closely with IT, and we vetted a number of survey platforms. Qualtrics was the only one that came out, you know, meeting those requirements. It is costly. We are currently in the process of looking, because it has been some time, to see if there's other solutions that are more affordable. But at the time, we found that many of these survey platforms, we had to agree to not using the platform for gathering student perspectives under the age of 16. And since our, all of our perceptual data starts at grade four, Qualtrics was the only solution at that time that would allow us to use the tool for grade four up until grade 12. So that's one part of the answer. It is our main data collection tool for our, all of our surveys. So we have our Have Your Say, which is conducted yearly, and it goes out from K to 12. We have gotten as many as 60,000 responses on our student census back in 2021. And we tend to always hover around 50 to 65% participation rate from grade four to grade 12. So that's just one survey. We use the tool for a number of data collections where the data are sensitive, such as this would be, because the moment that you limit the respondents to a heritage group, an identity group, you potentially have identifiable information should a data leak happen, or if the required protocols around the IP address, the longitude, the latitude of the address are not hidden, protected, removed. So in Qualtrics, our default is that all data coming in is stripped of that information. But that is a step that we've had to take. If that is not a step that is taken, then what you could potentially have is a list of individuals, students, who identify as Jewish, by virtue of them responding to the survey. And if their latitude and longitude and IP address is collected, you now have identifiable information that would cause a risk to the board, and certainly to the families.
Trustee Zhang, you'll have to go back on the list. You've gone over your three minutes.
Okay.
And trustee Baxter.
Thank you, through the chair. I would just like to thank staff and Dr. Bishaglia, specifically for conducting this thorough study and providing the comprehensive report. It's truly appreciated. I would just make a comment first, and then I have a question. If there's a perception that the discrimination experienced in the HDSP is systemic, I feel that this could significantly lower the participation rates if it's done, if a survey or a focus groups, whatever format is taken, we didn't actually discuss the details on that, that it could lower the participation rates and compromise the accuracy of the data. So that's just a comment, and was really the basis for the original motion, which was then modified to ask for a feasibility report. I have several questions. It's a long report, and I might have to think on this and come back to you another, another time. But I just wanted to, right now, confirm that the presumption that staff were working under when creating the report was the premise that a survey link that belonged to a third party would be distributed to families? That's okay. So on page 14, it says that a third party would gain access to student information or students via the board sharing their information. And I just wanted to clarify, the intention of the original motion to conduct a survey that, that mirrors the Student Voices initiative in 2021, was actually for the board to simply provide the contact information for the third party, and families to initiate that contact and participation in the survey. So it wouldn't be the board in the middle. It would be providing an opportunity for families to reach out, with the onus on those families and students to initiate the participation, and therefore understand all of the conditions under which they're participating. So who has access to the data, where the data would be? So all of the things that you indicated, which are very important in research ethics, would be, the onus would be on the families to agree to that. So I'm just wondering, is there a reason that that is not feasible? And that's why the report took the view that, that that's not the way it would be done? Thank you.
Yeah, through Madam Chair, I wasn't at that board meeting, so my understanding was that we would facilitate the connection between the students and the researcher or the third party. If that approach were to be taken, where a third party would essentially provide an opportunity for feedback to, to families and students, some of the considerations would still apply. At minimum, the request would come through the Research Advisory Committee, who reviews all data collection with students and staff pertaining to ethics guidelines, consent, privacy, and so forth. So I would say that some, at least, probably about half of the report would still apply.
Okay, thank you. I think that might have just been a discrepancy in understanding, so I appreciate that. That was really the basic intention of the original, and I apologize that that wasn't provided to you, so that you would understand the context of it. So in terms of these legal, technical, and privacy considerations, I also wanted to clarify, so these are relevant because the board would be referring students via their parents to engage and share information. I'm relating this a bit to a conversation we had several months ago about the AP on distribution of materials. I had raised a concern, and we haven't heard back on that, whether the board has liability for information shared. So when the board provides contact information or access to information about a third party, do we have liability as a board around that? I don't know if that question's been answered, and if that- I don't know if that question's been answered and if that influenced this report at all.
Through Madam Chair, so I can say that we, we get a lot of requests to disseminate information, even through the research department. It might be an organization that's having, you know, a specific faith-based after school program or et cetera. And there is vetting that takes place because the moment that we pass information to our students and our families, we are indirectly endorsing that organization and the work that would happen. I don't know that there is, at least I'm not aware of a specific protocol in place. It really does depend on the nature of the information that is being asked of us. There are times where, you know, I might consult with the Indigenous team or Human Rights and Equity or school programs, if it's an after school program. So it really does matter. But nonetheless, there is, whether it's legal or not, there is a sense of responsibility that if we're going to elevate a certain program information or a third party, that we've done our due diligence to know that the students will be safe.
I'll go to trustee Zhang for a second time speaker.
Thank you. Okay, so continuing my question. So the report says several times in several places that a survey conducted by a third party could receive reduced participation. So can compare our recent surveys through the, the third party and compare our in-house survey? How low, how the participation is? Can we compare the most recent?
Yes, through Madam Chair. So we collaborate with Public Health, for instance. And oftentimes we support Public Health and other organizations like Our Kids Network in disseminating their surveys and, and other data collection methods that they have. And it's not uncommon to hear that they have struggles in receiving a high enough response rate. So the differentiation is that with surveys that we conduct, because they're directly tied to our multi-year plan, we're able to ask our educators to carve time into their schedule, their instructional time schedule to allow students the opportunity to respond to the survey. We can't do that with third-party survey data collection. One, because we get about sixty data collection requests a year. So if you were to think about the number of instructional time that would be spent merely on data collection, that would compromise students' learning environment. And two, there just isn't the, I don't want to say like the engagement, but with in-house surveys, it directly relates to work that we're doing. It directly relates to our strategic vision. And so students also feel an investment toward it. Generally speaking, like I said, for the Have Your Say and other type of data collections, we have, we push for at least a sixty percent response rate. That is our bare minimum that we will accept. And there's a lot of work that goes into ensuring that administrators know of the survey. There's a lot of dissemination and support that happens. We cannot do that for all the research requests that we get from the public. So I've had researchers come back and say, of all the schools that we reached out to, nobody has signed up. And nobody has signed up because perhaps the principal looks at the scope of the work and says, this is a replication or this might not add to the work that is being done in, in my school or is just not helpful to, it would be a distraction for students and staff. Oftentimes what we do is we try to encourage families to participate at their own time. And that's usually done by disseminating the information in, in school newsletters. But then it's really out of our hands in terms of who participates. So sometimes I've heard from researchers, they come back and they say zero. And other times, like with Public Health, I think our last data collection, they were able to get about thirty percent.
Okay, thank you. So.
Trustee Zhang, you'll have to go back on the list again. Trustee Bryden.
Thank you. It, when we're talking about data collection processes, the, the, something like Have Your Say is incredibly useful in looking at a prevalence rate. When you've got a bunch of closed choice answers. If we're looking at something where we're looking for qualitative information and richer data, we want smaller numbers targeted to a, a specific group. If we are engaging in that kind of work, which is similar to, to the Student Voices report, there's, it's not as tied into our cycle of, of pre-existing surveys, all of which is to move us into the next question, which is if we were going to do something like Student Voices, what would our, you talk a little bit about a survey timeline in here. What would our timeline for a Student Voices type approach be? In, yeah, we'll, we'll leave it at that.
Through Madam Chair, I would say, you know, the very first step would be to ensure that the, the research team has the perspectives necessary to develop questions that are meaningful for the Jewish community. So we would need to partner with somebody. And I would, I would, you know, reach out to, you know, superintendent or, or Human Rights and Equity Officer for some contact names. We would need to develop relationships or engage in these conversations to be able to even develop the questions that we would be asking. So, you know, there's, there's contingencies, which is, I guess, what I'm trying to say. The, just by comparison, the Student Voice, that was done under tight timelines. We were able to do it within three months. And that includes the data analysis and so forth. And our typical approach is, of course, we wouldn't be, like you said, we wouldn't be aiming for hundreds of respondents. But we do use a threshold of saturation. So we stop reaching out to families and students once the perspectives that are being shared are consistent enough to feel that we have captured the depth of the experiences. So that could be ten students or that could be fifty students. It's hard to know until we have engaged in the work. But I would like to express that the research department would be happy to collaborate with individuals on this matter if the, if the desire is to move towards a direction of a qualitative data collection as opposed to a survey. We would be happy to support a survey using a hybrid model as well.
Trustee Baxter.
Thank you. Through the chair, I think my, my next question is probably for both Dr. Peshaklia and Director Ennis. On page thirteen, there are some questions listed that include whether the benefits of understanding antisemitism in the board can be realized without a survey and can the board address the issue without a survey? I'm not clear who those questions are posed to or who would be answering those, but it did in my mind raise the question. I guess I'll make a statement first. The reason that I brought this forward is over the last school year, I have been invited to observe meetings between Director Ennis and staff and the Jewish community. And I've also been sent many, many concerns from Jewish members of our HDSB community about what's happening in our schools and what they have reported to me they view to be systemic antisemitism. So that's why I brought this. I am in no way saying that I'm an expert on how surveys should be conducted or whether it should be a survey or, but I did, was very interested and have reviewed many times the Student Voices Report on anti-black racism. So I thought that could possibly be a model, but was really putting it out there hoping for staff to, you know, to support with, with the knowledge that, that you have. So I'm wondering, has the board conducted its own work up to now on understanding antisemitism in the board by looking at data that, that already exists on school incidents? Most of the parents who've reached out to me have reported something to the board. I did hear from people who said, I don't feel comfortable. I haven't told anyone about this. But the majority, and we did get a list when we had a delegation in the last school year. We did get a list of incidences and I believe the majority of them were, were kind of noted as having been reported. So the board does have data and does have information out there. I don't know if that sits with school principals or where that is. But I'm just wondering, has the board already done some work on this issue? Or would this really be? Because I was perceiving that this was something needed to be done in order to support staff in possibly starting to address the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll start and I know if Superintendent Petco or others, Superintendent Fowler in terms of data collection would like to add, or Dr. Peshaklia. Certainly, we have not waited for data collection in order to do the work. I think we have, we have detailed a number, on a number of occasions, a lot of things that we have done to support the Jewish community, a lot of initiatives that we have undertaken to support students and staff at various levels continuously. It is, it is part of our strategy in combating hate and discrimination and antisemitism in particular in this case. So, you know, we, we are, we're not, our data collection, as Superintendent Fowler will tell you, is not as robust or as accurate as we would like it to be. And certainly, as we move into this year, we are getting more finite in terms of how we actually identify various types of racism and discrimination and hate. So we will be better able to respond more accurately this year and moving forward. However, we have not waited for that data in order to respond. We've responded because we know it exists. And so I don't know if Superintendent Petco would like to add anything to us.
Thank you. Through the chair, thank you, Director Ennis. I think you've, I think you've, what's the word? I'm at a loss of word. Captured, thank you. Captured the essence of what I would, would add to this. What I want to punctuate right now is that we don't need data, we don't need to collect more data to confirm what we already know. So although data collection in order to provide evidence of something that is occurring in the Halton District School Board is important, so we know perhaps exactly what context, what setting, the, you know, the actual individuals for whom we need to provide support, whatever support that might look like, can be done swiftly and carefully and with caring and in a fulsome way. However, we know that racism and discrimination exists in Halton District School Board just as it parallels the conditions and the existence of racism that exists in other boards or in the city or in the province or nationally. We don't need more data to confirm that. Having said that, as Director Ennis has said already, strategies and plans and actions have already taken place to address racism and discrimination. But in particular, as we are speaking of antisemitism, antisemitism. And those strategies and plans have been implemented through the learning of adults, through direct supports to students, through the, through the support and resources that are made available to administrators as well as they, and teachers and staff as they support students directly, but also in terms of programming and culture building and sense of well-being in, in our school and our system. Because we truly believe that every student, regardless of identity, belongs and should feel safe. I'm going to turn it over back to you, Director Ennis, or over to Superintendent Fowler?
Sure. Superintendent Fowler, anything else you would add?
Yeah, you know what? I'm really just, I do look forward to the changes that we're making and to having a, a report that further delineates the differences or the, the data related to hate and/or bias motivated occurrences that lead to suspensions. So that will be something that you'll see next year when I bring the report, because we will be engaged in that work, collecting that data more specifically over the course of the school year.
Thank you. Did that answer your question, trustee Baxter?
I think so. We didn't ask Dr. Peshaklia. I guess the, you confirmed that there has not been a survey or a Student Voices-like thing done previously on antisemitism? I just wanted to confirm that with you.
Yeah, so through Madam Chair, again, just a clarification that the Student Voice Report was on the responses to racism. So it really was about the strategies that students have seen, how effective do they feel that they've been and so forth. So it wasn't to document incidents of anti-black racism. And there are cautions around asking students to talk about the harm that they experience, right? So as adults here and as leaders, as Superintendent Petco has just stated, we don't need students to tell us that antisemitism exists in their schools. We know it. You've also, you know, brought those voices forth. I think the conversation really needs to center on the actions and the responses and the supports that are put in place and, and their effectiveness for students.
Yes, just, I'm wondering, trustee Baxter, you had originally wanted to bring forward a motion to do a survey. I'm wondering if you want to take back everything that you've learned and perhaps come back in October or at committee in the whole and have a broader discussion there? Because this is, this is a big topic. The, the research aspect alone is a big topic. But then the broader topic being students who are feeling uncomfortable in our schools because of who they are. And, and so I, I welcome that. I'm just cognizant of the time. And so I'm wondering if you would like to say something about that?
That's where I was going. Thank you so much, Chair Collard. Thank you so much. That, so again, I apologize that you were not able to see the original motion because as trustee Bryden pointed out, it was intended to mirror or to, to take the lessons learned and, and what was done with the previous Student Voices Initiative. Because it was more than just gathering data. Because like I pointed out, I think the board does have that data of incidents or many of them. It's the student experience of the mitigation of harm that's been done. And that's what I was wondering if would be helpful because I've seen how helpful that's been at the Human Rights and Equity Advisory Committee to talk about initiatives and remedies. So that was sort of the thinking and I, I think we're, we're sort of on the same page with that. I would say that I agree with what you're saying that when you ask students to talk about experiences they've had, especially when it relates to their identities, that can be difficult and traumatizing. And what I've heard from the community that's reached out to me is that they feel that this has happened within the board. So there is some difficulty in engaging with board staff to further examine that. And that was the root of the suggestion of engaging a third party. So I just wanted to explain with that, explain that. And absolutely, I would, I, I need to absorb more and I feel like I need to send you some more information. Thank you again. I will revisit this and, and I have no motion to make tonight. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, trustee Baxter. And trustee Zhang, I will allow you one more question.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, last question. So before the last question, I just want to make comments for, about the data, because I'm a data person. Because if we have data, enough data to, to prove these, to serve the, the goal of the survey. So I like to see the data. So I don't need any personally identifiable information, just the data. So I can, because I'm very interested what incident it was and how many, how often and what is causality if we can do a research about that. That would be very helpful. So this is one thing. And my question is on page thirteen. So it says, "A range of Jewish identifying student." I don't know what a range of, what it, does, does it mean? This is in the section, a paragraph inclusion.
Through Madam Chair, I think the sentence is a diverse range. So just diverse. So just diverse perspectives. So the Jewish community is not monolithic. It is varied as well. And so just similar to the indigenous communities, it's varied. And so we would need to ensure that the recruitment would allow for diverse voices and experiences to come forth.
Thank you very much for all your work this evening, Dr. Bishaglia. Have a good evening. I think this was your last call to perform. And for the rest of us, we've been sitting still for two and a half hours. So let's take a five-minute break. and I will pass it over to Director Ennis.
Thank you so much, Chair Collard. Good evening, everyone, and welcome back to a new school year, to our families and our students. We're so excited to embark on this 2024-2025 school year. I certainly was out at the school on the first day, and the excitement was in the air. Students and families were so appreciative of all the great work that we have done to welcome students, and the facilities look great. And so we are grateful for all of our hostolial staff, all of our teaching staff, our principals and vice principals, office staff, and all our staff who were involved in making sure that students could come back to a school that was clean, that was ready for them, and that would certainly aid in their learning. Unfortunately, we learned over the summer that one of our students, Merrick, a grade five student from Tiger Jit Singh, passed away in July 10th. Merrick was known for his infectious but mischievous smile and most heartwarming laugh. He was the epitome of love and positivity. His incredibly happy and fun personality carried him through his hard days and always managed to make those around him see the good in life. Merrick will be fondly remembered by the entire Tiger Jit Singh family, and our thoughts are with Merrick's family and friends and the entire school community. If you would be kind enough to join me in a moment of silence for Merrick. Thank you. May his memory be a blessing to his family and to the entire school community. We have some exciting news to share. Staff update. We now have a new Superintendent of Human Resources at her first board meeting, Allison Superintendent Ippolito. Please join me in welcoming Allison Ippolito. Allison, as we know, is homegrown and has been with Halton a long time, has worked in various roles. And this is, I would say, the epitome of her career, but I don't know. She might be, she might have more in her. So I, I don't want to downplay her aspirations. But Allison, we're so glad to have you on the team, and we know that you will make us better. We hosted the HDSB, the Anti-Sex Traffic Awareness, for students in August 27th and 28th. And as Superintendent Fowler can tell you, we had a great turnout. It is part of our strategy to continue to make our schools safe and to bring awareness to this issue. HDSB, we had our Explorina Summer Camp that had students turn out to support the work around culturally sensitive work, Afrocentric work, mindfulness affirmations, and a lot of focus through the graduation coaches that we have for Black students. So we are grateful for that summer program. That was a success this year. We also have some student transportation update that I'm going to ask Superintendent Nagoy to give at this time.
Thank you. And I guess continuing with the success of the start of the school year, we've had very low reported open routes this year compared to the previous few years, and that is as a direct result of tireless recruiting efforts, training efforts for our bus operators in coordination with our HSDS department. And we're happy to report that all of the open routes, which are about 2.2% this year, have been covered through spare drivers or doubling on some routes. Of course, that meant some delays in the system, in addition to some of the delays as a result of just more traffic around the start of the school year and construction. But all in all, great news.
Thank you. And now on to the budget update.
And more great news. On Friday, we received the formal approval from the Minister of Education for our 2024-2025 budget and the projected in-year deficit of 1.8 million.
Thank you. We're grateful for that and thankful to the ministry for their support. The multi-year plan update, just to let you know that our progress to date, we've, Ember Experience have engaged over 3,000 parties in consulting through surveys, focus groups, and town halls, and more. And so we are grateful for the work that they have done. You have the report in front of you in terms of the number of participants in each category. Due to the nature of these engagements, the counts are approximate, and so they're, they're not exact numbers. So one of the things that I want to highlight, of course, is the collaboration between trustees and senior staff on the multi-year plan. And the work that we have done collaboratively has been a tremendous strength. And so we look forward to, you have all the dates listed of the times we met in terms of some next steps. Ember Experience, of course, sent out a draft commitments that you, I think you all have by now, on September 11th, which is tomorrow. The NYPD Committee is going to be meeting. Following that, we're going to be collecting trustee feedback that will come to committee of the whole October 15th, and the strategic plan to be approved at the board meeting November 5th. So we are on course. Amy and I met with the Ember Experience folks, and so we believe that things are progressing nicely. And we're looking forward to your continuous feedback. Staff are working on their feedback. The trustees will give their feedback. And so we are excited about the next version of our multi-year strategic plan, and our system will be excited. And we look forward to, to that, to the completion of that process. So I just want to thank everyone, all the trustees, for your great work in leading this work, and to the steering committee and to all involved. And that ends my report for this evening.
Thank you for your report, Director Ennis. I would just like to reflect on something that I've been reading in the news during the past week. The first was an article written by Kanal Chowdhury at TVO entitled "How the Ford Government Is Accelerating the Decline of School Libraries." And the second was an article by longtime education columnist Kristin Rochoi entitled "Ford Government Risking the Reading Skills of Thousands of Kindergarten Students' Human Rights Report Says." They were published one day apart, and I saw a theme that I wanted to bring into focus. In the last six years, our board and many other boards across the province have been tightening our belts as the increased cost of maintaining our programs and services continues to outpace the provincial funding model. A few years ago, our board made the decision to reassign our teacher librarians to classroom teaching positions in an effort to balance our budget. I remember asking what impact this would have on our students, not only from a pedagogical perspective, but also from a social one. We know how important it is for staff to know their students well. The teacher librarian was the one teacher who interacted with every student in the school. The importance of this role cannot be understated, cannot be overstated, especially at a time when mental health concerns are on the rise. In the TVO article, Michelle Arbuckle is quoted stating, "In this age of misinformation, the teacher librarian is the one that is going to teach kids that not everything they read on the internet is real. How to validate sources, how to differentiate between truthful and fake news, how to be good digital citizens. This makes the role of the teacher librarian especially critical." Kristin Rochoi's article states that literacy is a key skill that has been linked to not only better academic outcomes, but also a person's overall health and well-being. In the same article, she quotes the Elementary Teachers Federation of Ontario, saying, "Literacy skills will not improve unless adequate funding, training, resources, and supports are provided." I am deeply concerned about what's happening here in Halton and across the province. Director Ennis, what is the HDSB doing to ensure our students continue to love reading and excel at it? And what can this board of trustees do to help?
Thank you for the question, Chair Collard.
Okay, we are now up to the director's report,
Okay, we are now up to the Director's Report and I will pass it over to Director Ennis.
Thank you so much, Chair Collard. Good evening, everyone, and welcome back to a new school year, to our families and our students. We're so excited to embark on this 2024-2025 school year. I certainly was out at the school on the first day and the excitement was in the air. Students and families were so appreciative of all the great work that we have done to welcome students and the facilities look great. And so we are grateful for all of our hostolial staff, all of our teaching staff, our principals and vice principals, office staff, and all our staff who were involved in making sure that students could come back to a school that was clean, that was ready for them, and that would certainly aid in their learning. Unfortunately, we learned over the summer that one of our students, Merrick, a grade five student from Tiger Jit Singh, passed away in July 10th. Merrick was known for his infectious but mischievous smile and most heartwarming laugh. He was the epitome of love and positivity. His incredibly happy and fun personality carried him through his hard days and always managed to make those around him see the good in life. Merrick will be fondly remembered by the entire Tiger Jit Singh family, and our thoughts are with Merrick's family and friends and the entire school community. If you would be kind enough to join me in a moment of silence for Merrick. Thank you. May his memory be a blessing to his family and to the entire school community. We have some exciting news to share. Staff update. We now have a new Superintendent of Human Resources at her first board meeting, Allison Superintendent Ippolito. Please join me in welcoming Allison Ippolito. Allison, as we know, is homegrown and has been with Halton a long time, has worked in various roles, and this is, I would say, the epitome of her career, but I don't know, she might be, she might have more in her, so I don't want to downplay her aspirations. But Allison, we're so glad to have you on the team, and we know that you will make us better. We hosted the HDSB, the Anti-Sex Traffic Awareness, for students in August 27th and 28th, and as Superintendent Fowler can tell you, we had a great turnout. It is part of our strategy to continue to make our schools safe and to bring awareness to this issue. HDSB, we had our Explorin' Us Summer Camp that had students turn out to support the work around culturally sensitive work, Afrocentric work, mindfulness affirmations, and a lot of focus through the graduation coaches that we have for Black students. So we are grateful for that summer program. That was a success this year. We also have some student transportation update that I'm going to ask Superintendent Nagoy to give at this time.
Thank you. And I guess continuing with the success of the start of the school year, we've had very low reported open routes this year compared to the previous few years, and that is as a direct result of tireless recruiting efforts, training efforts for our bus operators in coordination with our HSDS department. And we're happy to report that all of the open routes, which are about 2.2% this year, have been covered through spare drivers or doubling on some routes. Of course, that meant some delays in the system, in addition to some of the delays as a result of just more traffic around the start of the school year and construction. But all in all, great news.
Thank you. And now on to the budget update.
And more great news. On Friday, we received the formal approval from the Minister of Education for our 2024-2025 budget and the projected in-year deficit of 1.8 million.
Thank you. We're grateful for that and thankful to the Ministry for their support. The multi-year plan update, just to let you know that our progress to date, we've, Ember Experience have engaged over 3,000 parties in consulting through surveys, focus groups, and town halls, and more, and so we are grateful for the work that they have done. You have the report in front of you in terms of the number of participants in each category. Due to the nature of these engagements, the counts are approximate, and so they're not exact numbers. So one of the things that I want to highlight, of course, is the collaboration between trustees and senior staff on the multi-year plan, and the work that we have done collaboratively has been a tremendous strength. And so we look forward to, you have all the dates listed of the times we met in terms of some next steps. Ember Experience, of course, sent out draft commitments that you, I think you all have by now. On September the 11th, which is tomorrow, the NYPD Committee is going to be meeting. Following that, we're going to be collecting trustee feedback that will come to Committee of the whole October the 15th, and the strategic plan to be approved at the board meeting November the 5th. So we are on course. Amy and I met with the Ember Experience folks, and so we believe that things are progressing nicely, and we're looking forward to your continuous feedback. Staff are working on their feedback, no trustees will give their feedback. And so we are excited about the next version of our multi-year strategic plan, and our system will be excited, and we look forward to that, to the completion of that process. So I just want to thank everyone, all the trustees, for your great work in leading this work, and to the steering committee and to all involved. And that ends my report for this evening.
Thank you for your report, Director Ennis. I would just like to reflect on something that I've been reading in the news during the past week. The first was an article written by Canal Chowdhury at TVO entitled "How the Ford Government is Accelerating the Decline of School Libraries." And the second was an article by longtime education columnist Kristin Rochoi entitled "Ford Government Risking the Reading Skills of Thousands of Kindergarten Students' Human Rights Report Says." They were published one day apart, and I saw a theme that I wanted to bring into focus. In the last six years, our board and many other boards across the province have been tightening our belts as the increased cost of maintaining our programs and services continues to outpace the provincial funding model. A few years ago, our board made the decision to reassign our teacher librarians to classroom teaching positions in an effort to balance our budget. I remember asking what impact this would have on our students, not only from a pedagogical perspective, but also from a social one. We know how important it is for staff to know their students well. The teacher librarian was the one teacher who interacted with every student in the school. The importance of this role cannot be overstated, especially at a time when mental health concerns are on the rise. In the TVO article, Michelle Arbuckle is quoted stating, "In this age of misinformation, the teacher librarian is the one that is going to teach kids that not everything they read on the internet is real. How to validate sources, how to differentiate between truthful and fake news, how to be good digital citizens. This makes the role of the teacher librarian especially critical." Kristin Rochoi's article states that literacy is a key skill that has been linked to not only better academic outcomes, but also a person's overall health and wellbeing. In the same article, she quotes the Elementary Teachers Federation of Ontario saying, "Literacy skills will not improve unless adequate funding, training, resources, and supports are provided." I am deeply concerned about what's happening here in Halton and across the province. Director Ennis, what is the HDSB doing to ensure our students continue to love reading and excel at it, and what can this Board of Trustees do to help?
Thank you for the question, Chair Collard. I certainly want to highlight for us, and as we know, that Halton has always had a very strong and rich history of literacy, and our students have done well and exceedingly so. And as you know, in the previous school year, not this immediate past, but previous to that, because there's a year's lag in the data that we receive, we're anxiously awaiting the data for this past school year. But the latest data that we have showed that our grade threes read, over 80% of them met or exceeded the provincial standards. Our grade sixes, 90% of them met or exceeded the provincial standards. Our grade 12s, over 92% of them met or exceeded the provincial standards. And so along the way, all along the marker, all markers along our journey, K to 12, show that there is a strong and rich history of literacy in the Halton District School Board. And so specifically to library, I'm going to ask, you know, Superintendent Connor and then Superintendent Frankovich to speak to the program pieces in terms of what we're doing to support literacy, and then I can wrap up in terms of what trustees can do.
Thank you, Director Ennis, and through to Madam Chair. First of all, I would just like to state, I start by stating that I very much appreciate the question and the concern, and I'm very happy to speak on behalf of Library Services. What I can share is that our library staff and school libraries, we know, do play a critical role in being able to promote the love of reading, access to rich, wonderful resources, and really ensuring that our students have the opportunity to enhance their literacy skills and connection to books and reading and to literacy. Not unlike other boards, as you've referenced, boards across the province have varying staffing models with which they manage their school libraries to support all of the work and the actions that happen within libraries and schools. Within our board, as many of you know, we have dedicated staff at the central level and certainly, of course, at the local level as well, including library technicians in our elementary schools, teacher librarians and library technicians within our secondary schools, who do serve a very critical role in terms of what our school libraries look like and how active and engaging they are. Individuals in those roles, I can tell you, our library staff are deeply committed to ensuring that our school libraries within the Halton District School Board are richly resourced with books and learning resources that are relevant, that are current, that are interesting, that are engaging for our students, that expose our students to diverse authors, perspectives, and ideas, and that they also see themselves in the books that they read, so they're deeply connected to the literature that they have engagement to. Love of reading, the development of literacy skills certainly is a component within Library Services, certainly lends deeply, of course, as well within our school programs. So perhaps Superintendent Frankovich could also speak and share some thoughts.
Thank you. And through the chair to all trustees, as Director Ennis pointed out too, our data tells a story, and it really tells us that our students are doing extremely well in reading and writing, but it is definitely something that we will continue to monitor to ensure that we maintain the high levels of achievement. We also have provincially a new language curriculum, and the work that we're doing in Strand B, which is the foundations of language section, ensures students are learning those beginning skills of word reading and spelling. We use in our board Wilson Foundations in kindergarten to grade two classrooms, and that's part of our response to the Right to Read Report, and that's provided a very consistent approach across the system in each of our schools around structured reading. And our students do continue to have access to digital and print resources, and that's in the classroom and still in our school libraries as well. From a staffing standpoint, we have learning resource teachers, we have itinerant resource teachers, and as part of their work, they're using high-impact instructional practices to engage students in reading at an early age, because we know when we engage them early, that's going to lead to positive writing as well. As Superintendent Connor mentioned, we also focus on the selection of appropriate resources, because we want to appeal to students' interests at a young age and make sure that we're selecting resources that represent their lived experiences. Also, from a professional development standpoint, this one's fresh, because I just signed off on them today. To remain current in our practice, we do send staff to the largest conference in Canada, largest language arts conference in Canada held right here, right in Toronto, reading for the love of it, because we want to make sure that our practices are current, that we're utilizing best practices, so that when those staff come back to Halton and share their learning with teachers across the system, that we are, you know, promoting that lifelong love of literacy. And then I think to sum it up, like coming back to the data, you know, there's message from IQAO, we're looking forward to that data in the weeks that lie ahead, because we want to monitor how we're doing. You know, we have the bar extremely high in terms of our reading and writing scores, and we want to make sure that we're doing everything to maintain that.
Thank you for that, Superintendent Frankovich and Connor. Just to say, Superintendent Frankovich mentioned the Wilson Reading Series. I got to tell you, trustees, that our staff are excited. I've never seen staff so excited about teaching little kids how to read, like focused on the foundations and the science of reading. I think that's something that we have really, you know, embraced, and right across the system, wherever I go, I know that I see it, and the staff are excited. So I think it bodes well for us. I think trustees can continue to advocate for the funding. We go right back to the conversations we had earlier about, you know, because we're always trying to do more with not so much. And so, you know, if, the more we have, the more we can offer. And so if you can continue to advocate, you know, for the finance and the budget, I think that goes a long way in helping us, you know, maintaining what we have and improving it.
Thank you very much for that response. It gives a lot of detail, and I'm sure will help assuage the concerns of parents who are having their little ones just starting school this year for the very first time. I know that this board has a rich tradition in this area, and I'm glad to see it continuing. Trustee Amos.
Thank you. I just have a question to follow up from all the information, and thank you for sharing all that great stuff that is happening, because I am so happy to hear that the path we're continuing will support our students, and reading is such an important foundation. One of the roles that the teacher librarian used to have was to also help facilitate programs such as Silver Birch and Red Maple and that kind of thing. Do those programs still exist in the schools? Do we know?
Yes, I can respond to that. So to trustee Amos through the chair. Yeah, so we have a number of reading programs, wonderful initiatives happening in our school libraries. There is, a lot of our central staff continues to support schools, so that we have some of those things happening regionally, and again, very much directed and deeply embedded within what schools are experiencing and what school libraries look like for our children.
Thank you. That's really good to hear, because I know from my children going through some of that, they were exposed to Canadian books by authors, and then some of the schools got to go to some of those great big, at the end of the year, when all the books are voted for, but which one's the best. And it was, it was such a great experience, because they had a voice in that, but they also had a voice in the kind of books that they found out that were Canadian. So it was a really important thing. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Amos. Trustee Baxter.
Thank you. I would, I appreciate that you, that you brought these articles to our attention, Chair Collard. I think it's important to remember that articles like this are written about education in general in Ontario, not necessarily about our board. And so I always say to parents, if you're hearing something, if you're reading something, please talk to staff and find out what's actually happening in our board. As a current parent here with two kids in the board, I am full of praise for how literacy and reading is handled here. Staff are doing a great job, and I did experience the change in the way libraries are staffed, and I found that the classroom teachers have really fulfilled that role quite well. That's been my personal experience as a parent, and I'm glad to hear as a trustee that that's, you know, that's strategic and it's across the board. I would just like to share that my first OPSA conference, after becoming a trustee, there was a presentation from the Ontario Human Rights Commission talking about the Right to Read Report, and I sat there and listened to them say how disappointed they were that their recommendations were not being implemented, and how proud I felt to be from Halton, because we already were. And so they were saying, this and this, and this is not being done, and it was already done here. So we were way ahead of the curve provincially. There were trustees sitting in the room, they had no idea what was being talked about, and I was already seeing this stuff in schools. So thank you to all the staff who make that possible. It is, it's very, I'm very proud to be representing the board when I go out and see what's happening other boards. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions for the Director regarding any of the items on his report? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to communications from the chair, and I just have a brief welcome back to another school year full of exciting learning opportunities for all, including us. Throughout the summer, many trustees worked diligently on a number of projects. The Director's Performance Appraisal Legislation that went into effect earlier this year had timelines for completion that compressed our usual schedule, and I want to express my many thanks to the DPA Committee, especially trustee Gray, as well as trustee Baxter and Vice Chair Oliver, for the many hours involved in getting this done, not only on time, but in a thoughtful and effective manner. I also want to shout out to the Governance Document Review Standing Committee for continuing to work throughout the summer months to ensure the board would be ready to move forward quickly this fall. In particular, I'd like to thank Manager Khan for her assistance in the creation of new report templates, which will benefit all of us and which will be unveiled at Committee of the Whole. In addition to this, we continued our work with the senior administrators on producing a new multi-year strategic plan for 2024 to 2028. The concerted efforts of all involved made this work a labor of love. It was wonderful to see so many ideas being brought forward. As much as our current multi-year plan has served the HDSB well, I truly believe our new multi-year plan will be widely embraced and used as a sounding board for decision-making throughout the HDSB. As I said at the Leadership Conference a couple of weeks ago, I expect great things from all of us this year. And that concludes my report. If there are any questions, I'll wait a second before moving on to committee updates. And seeing none, we will go on to committee updates. Do we have any committee updates, statutory or staff-led? Seeing none, we move on to the OPSA update. Is there an OPSA update for public session?
No, there is not. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, trustee comments and questions? Are there any announcements this evening? Trustee Zhang.
Thank you, Chair. This is not announcement, so I just want to talk about an AP we accepted early this year. So early this year...
Trustee Zhang?
Yeah.
APs are not approved by trustees?
Yes, I know, I know. This is not approved. So I just talked about one of the section of the AP.
Okay.
So this is gender expression, the gender identity AP. So in this AP, Section 8 allows students to participate in the school sports competition using their self-identified gender. So I consider this is unfair, and this has risked to students' safety during the competition. So in the recent Olympic Games, we can see there's a game, there's a female boxing game, and an Italian athlete quit in 40 seconds. So this, she said she cannot, cannot continue. So the opponent, the strength is much stronger than she can handle, never seen that. So of course, the other person is biologically male. And so if we say that's a special case, but we can see another tragedy happened two years ago in North Carolina, North Carolina. So that's two years ago in a high school volleyball, female volleyball game. So there's a high school student, she was hit on face by the other team spike, a very strong spike, and after the spike caused concussion immediately. And then after that, there's a lifetime impact. So she said that incident changed her life, because she...
Trustee Zhang, do you have a question?
So my question is, we need to, for student safety and fair competition, we need to remove Section 8 from the AP.
Trustee Zhang, the AP is beyond our purview. Trustees do not approve these.
Student well-being is in our purview. This is everyone's responsibility.
It's everyone's responsibility, but the AP falls under the Director's responsibility.
That's why I would suggest removing.
Would you like to speak to that?
Thank you, trustee Zhang. Thank you for your comment. Staff have reviewed the AP, and we're satisfied with it. We are, you know, we seek and are seeking to become more and more inclusive as a board. We're creating a space where everyone knows they belong, whether they are trans students, straight student, gay student, any student. That's the theme of what we've been talking about tonight, is that everyone knows that they belong, whether they're Black students, Jewish students, tall students, short students, every student. And so you're identifying a problem that we don't have. We don't have a problem in the Halton District School Board. We've never, we have not had a single issue.
So if there's AP, can put the student...
Trustee Zhang, you may not interrupt.
And so you are identifying for us, trustee Zhang, a problem that we don't have. This is a, this is a solution seeking a problem. We don't have a problem, and I believe that we are an inclusive board, and we're doing a great job of it.
Do you have a follow-up question?
So North Carolina, the case could be the first one. So before that, there's, nobody knows there's a, this is huge risk. So we don't want this to happen in Halton School Board. So that's why we need to prevent that from happening. I'm not saying we don't respect the student's self-identified gender, so they can still express themselves. So there's no problem. We accept that, because they are protected by the Human Rights Code, and we fully respect their self-identifying. But the only thing is, we need to consider the student's risk. Risk exists. We don't want that to happen in Halton.
Thank you, trustee Zhang. Trustee Rocha.
Through you, Chair. Question regarding delegations. Starting today, our board meetings have now been moved to Tuesdays, and our delegation GP states that if the public wishes to delegate, they need to delegate, submit their delegation two business days prior to the board meeting, which would mean, in this new world that we started today, that if the board package goes out on Thursday, the public would have by Friday noon to send in their delegation request, which realistically, that's not feasible. So I would recommend that we review the delegation GP to ensure that we are giving the public ample time to send in their submission, perhaps maybe by one business day. Anyway, question here is, is the delegation GP being looked at in order to accommodate the public?
I'll defer to the Chair of that committee, trustee Bryden.
We will put that on the agenda for the September 18th meeting to come to Committee of the Whole as expeditiously as possible.
Are there any other questions?
That was all.
Thank you. And trustee Bryden.
As the parent of a child who started school this week, I would like to say an enormous thank you to all of our kindergarten teachers. We are asking you to do more work this year. I know that was a decision we made in June. It is harder for you this year, and you are doing phenomenal work. I've seen the kids wailing at drop-off, and I've seen you welcome them in, and I've seen them smile. Thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you for that heartfelt response or comment. That was lovely. Thank you very much for that, trustee Bryden. Trustee Zhang.
Thank you, Chair. So I want to continue about the previous discussion about the definition about antisemitism, and now we have one more term, this anti-Palestinian racism. So we need to have this definition, because in the past six months, we saw the cases happen in Iroquois Ridge, Arlington Central, and the Oklueh T A B. All those cases, if we have a statement, we release a statement and say those things can be antisemitism or anti-Palestinian racism, then we need to have a definition. Otherwise, we cannot just say this, because if we have no law, there's no law violation. So this is one thing, we need to put the definition in our procedure. And so, because without that, I don't know how can we determine this is what violation it is. And so for the very limited information about the incident happened in T A B and the Central. So I'm still, from my research, is about the image. So I have never seen those images. I don't know what it is. So I guess one incident is about antisemitism, and the other one is anti-Palestinian racism. But the image could be very similar from the description. From what I researched, I found the information very limited, but I don't know. I found the image is the same image. How can one's similar image or same or similar image, one is antisemitism, the other one is anti-Palestinian? So this one, we need to clarify. And the last one, the question, this is just comments. How can we implement, put those cases, the real case? We don't need to put any personal information in the PD, but we really need to learn from our lessons. If we can have those materials, what images put in PD, that's the real case, everyone can learn. Otherwise, actually, I don't know what is the real violation in our school board. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Zhang. Okay, so that concludes public session agenda. We will now need a motion to go into private. Trustee.
Yep, do it.
Seconded by trustee Amos. Is there any objection to going into private session? Seeing none, we go into private session by unanimous consent. Thank you.
Okay, folks, we're back.
I need a motion to extend the meeting by 10 minutes. Robbie, is there a second for that motion to extend by 10 minutes? Trustee Zhang, thank you. Is there any discussion? Thank you. We are extending by 10 minutes by unanimous consent. Do we have any business from private session, Vice Chair Oliver?
Yes, we do. We have three motions to ratify. Okay. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve matters from committee of the whole private session respecting property matters, private session agenda item 3.1 and ISO move.
Trustee Amos, would you second?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Shin Yi, would you please vote? Thank you. It's not working? Okay. Are you in favor or opposed? There you go. And trustee Ahmed, would you please vote?
In favor, please.
Thank you. And that passes unanimously. Can we please have in the record that trustee Rocha had to leave at 10 o'clock? Thank you. So that, yes, that passes unanimously. Thank you.
Okay. Be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve matters from the committee of the whole private session respecting personnel and negotiations, private session agenda item 3.2 and ISO move.
Trustee Gray, would you like to second that motion?
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your votes. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
And our final ratification item, be it resolved that the Halton District School Board approve matters from committee of the whole private session respecting personnel and negotiations, private session agenda item 3.3 and ISO move.
Trustee Baxter, would you like to second that motion?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please register your vote. Thank you. That passed unanimously. We have now exhausted our business for this evening, and I call our meeting adjourned. Thank you.